Council directs city staff to investigate a comparative analysis on how transit ridership reduces wear and tear or expansion costs on city roads, which in turn would reduce the overall cost of road construction and maintenance, and therefore budget and property taxes. I would like to see this explained in a pamphlet for the public. Pamphlets and magnets for city information phone number of 311 to help make travel planning efficient, I think. I also think a small survey could be designed to be handed out on this day and returned to staff on that day, or to transit drivers, or with an option to drop it at City Hall or to mail it in as well. I think all buses should have their pamphlets and maps restocked for such an event, and staff at transfer points should also have a supply of such materials. That is my presentation.
Well, thank you for your presentation, and thanks for being here. It's truly appreciated. I'm going to open it up to council in case they have questions of you. At the end of our afternoon session, council will have an opportunity to ask administration questions and potentially make any motions of business that might be arising. But for now, it's an opportunity for council to ask Ms. Macklin questions, recognizing Councillor Thiessen.
Wow, I got first in. That's great. Ms. Macklin, Sadie, nice to see you here. I love your idea. I love the idea of a Transit Day coming forward to the City of Grand Prairie. It seems like it could be something that we tie into Earth Day. I was already writing that, and then you said that. So I think that's awesome. This council especially has worked really hard to try to improve our transit system, and we're always looking for great ideas, from Transit on Demand to Where's My Ride to Free Transit for Youth 17 and Under. We're trying to grow this for all the reasons why you stated before. I guess my question for you is, we have the Free Transit for Youth already, 17 and under. What do you think the best way would be for us to get their parents to skip the car for a day and jump on the transit with their kids?
Yeah, well, it's a hard question because I think a lot of people are so addicted to just the ease of hopping in the vehicle and going to, you know, going to a single place. But if we have one day where, you know, they can ride for free and you don't have cost associated with it, and, you know, it's promoted. People, I think there's a lot of people, they just don't know where the routes go. And if you, we have to get people starting to think about having more, doing more things in a trip, you know, packaging their activities so they're going from one thing to the next to the next before they go home. And I just, I don't know what is the best way to get adults to multitask their travel and the planning. A lot of people will say, "Oh, but we're an oil, we're an oil city. We have, you know, we're not going to give up our vehicles." That's not supporting of the industry, and I don't know. I just, maybe if the kids and the seniors get the rides, then the adults will, you know, will come along too, you know? One of the things I think that would make it easier for people to take, I'm involved with the Bear Creek Folk Fest, and I have seen events at Musca Cepi Park where I have been waiting at the bus stop at the main entrance of Musca Cepi Park, and everybody is flooding out of the park, and the buses can't get past that crosswalk to pick up everybody on the other side to take them to the Town Center Mall to disperse them. And I think it would be really useful to have a traffic guards, you know, some city staff there stopping people to allow the buses through, to disperse the population because you need, the buses are the best way to get people back out into the community, and that would really cut down on the number of vehicles right around the park at those key times.
Awesome. Yeah, no, thank you very much, and that's great because with a lot of those events, we might even be able to do Transit Day more than once a year.
If you could do that, that would be great.
Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you very much, Sadie, for coming in, and this is an important thing that we're doing for our community and getting moving people around. I like your idea that councilors would sit down and talk to all the residents that would come that day. I'm not sure how we could get everyone to buy into your idea. I really like it. And having special days would, I think, be something we'd look at. You mentioned about having a pamphlet, and a lot of the information, I think, is online. So I'll be asking the administration later on to see how do we communicate getting this message out to the community to use a bus system. I also like your idea of having somebody control the traffic and moving people to the terminal. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else in the queue, but I did want to let you know that, really appreciate your ideas. But for your information, we actually do Free Transit on Earth Day. So that being said, obviously that information needs to get out because you weren't aware of that, and so council needs to maybe consider how we're going to promote that event so that more people take us up on that. But April 26 was when we did Free Transit for Earth Day this year. But April 26 was when we did Free Transit for Earth Day this year. But it's something, and I don't recall the previous years if Free Transit was included, but it definitely was this year. So I love the idea of having councillors and administrators at sort of key transfer stations to provide more information. And as Councillor Thiessen mentioned, we, this council made the change to have transit under 17 free, and our ridership has gone up significantly, over 100% increase in riderships in certain time because of this free under 17. So it's great to see the youth utilizing it, and then they get trained in their brain. The transit's a great option, you know, into the future and always. We have seen significant growth, and we also by adding our on-demand routes to areas. Most recently, we added on-demand to Copperwood. And so bringing those sort of arterial areas of our community to the primary collector transit routes has really made it more accessible for people. But I do agree that the sharing of information would be extremely valuable. And Grand Prairie is a very easy community to use transit because of the way that we're laid out. It's, it's not hard to use it, but you're right, it's changing that frame of mind so that people understand the benefits and how easily accessible it is and how easy the routes are. So I really appreciate you being here today. Oh, and I see I have one more in the queue now. Councillor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I got out of the queue because I didn't want to take over, but I got you here. You got great ideas, and you want people to ride transit, which is very in line with what this council has been working towards this whole term. My question for you, though, Sadie, is I think part of the transit experience is the experience of riding transit. How convenient is it? How quick is it? How do I get from point A to point B the fastest? And so if we make, if we make the, I guess, the travel time efficient, then we might have more people getting on the bus. Along, I've advocated for express routes to take us around the city. But my question for you is, how would we, how do, how do we better improve the rider experience, in your opinion, so that we can grow on the already growing numbers of transit riders?
Well, I was just thinking of another idea, and that is to publicize how buses, the bikes are allowed on the buses. Like, you go to the big cities, they're allowed on the buses, but only during certain hours. And here, you're allowed to take them at any time. And so like, one of the challenges is some people find it's a little bit too far from the bus stop to their home. But if you, if you had, if they were aware that they could just throw the bike on and, you know, maybe bike one way, get their exercise, and take the bus, the bus home, you know, that that's another, that's another option. But I think the other thing is, I appreciate, for example, that the Folk Fest is allowed to, to take their, ride the transit with their, with their pass to the Folk Fest. But the challenge is transit quits running before the Folk Fest clears out. And so you have this large population of people who they can get down there, but how are you going to get them home again?
You're, you're explaining my volunteer experience last year, driving volunteers home. But yeah, no, you're right. Yeah. Maybe later hours, too.
Yeah, you know.
Well, we do that for stomped. We add the hours are slightly later, and so to get people to ever Green Park, but yeah.
Great. Thank you so much, Sadie.
Thank you for being here. Please, you're welcome to stick around. Our agenda actually isn't very long, so if you wanted to stick around, I know I heard from some of my colleagues, there is some questions for administration. So please feel free to stick around, or you can always go home and watch it online.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here. All right, moving on to item number seven today, reports, first 7.1, the 2025 Council and Standing Committee Calendar. I'll go to Mr. Burke for introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. This is an update to the previously approved council calendar. The two significant changes that we're recommending councillor approve are to shift the, the post-election budget debate a week later, just in recognition of the election, and then providing some additional time for, for the new council to, to review that information. The second change is just to amend the dates of the orientation following the election into a little bit more condensed format, and us to be able to publicize that for, for all candidates so they can plan ahead should they be successful in election. So we're recommending councillor approve this updated agenda or calendar.
Thanks for that introduction. I'll turn it over to council for questions for administration or business arising, recognizing Councillor O'Connor.
Yes, if there's no other questions from other councillors, I will do business. Thank you. I'd like to move councillor approve the 2025 Council and Standing Committee meeting schedule as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I just wanted to check one other thing. We're good. Seeing no one else in the queue, call the question.
Press see in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item 7.2, the declaration of insufficiency of petition, again to the CAO, Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The city received a petition containing 310 signatures regarding rapid population in Swan Haven, and the details are included in your package, bringing this correspondence to council's attention, as well as informing council as per the MGA requirements that was not deemed sufficient as an official petition.
Right. Thanks for that information, recognizing councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just a question for Mr. CAO. So we've had two petitions now, one for, one against the bunnies. We've also given direction to do a education campaign on not feeding the bunnies in the Swan Haven area. Is there anything else that councillor administration are going to do in working towards the end of this issue, I guess? Or is we're just going to go with the public campaign and, and we'll go from there?
Mr. Burke?
The, the campaign was the initial project the council recommended. There was a request for some additional information on, on some, some other avenues to pursue. Don't have a timeline on bringing that back, but that, that is on our outstanding item list to bring back some further information at a later date. But the education campaign is the primary focus of administration at the moment.
No, thank you for that. And if there are no other questions, I can do business. Yeah, I would move that councillor receive the declaration of insufficiency of petition for information.
Thanks for that motion. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question.
Press see in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number eight today, committee business. First on the agenda is the Investment and Strategy Committee meeting held July 22, 2025. And I'll turn this one over to councillor Pressy for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move the council accept the Investment and Strategy Committee meeting minutes held July 2020, or sorry, July 22 as presented.
Thanks for that. The motion is in order. Call the question. And that carries unanimously. Councillor Thiessen, I see you still in the queue. Is that, okay. Councillor Pressy, any highlights from your meeting?
Yeah, so it was, one of the privileges of this committee is we get to hear from community partners who the city funds, and they come to give their updates on how that funding's being spent and what their challenges are, and as well as what the success are. So I always look forward to that. We got to hear from Night Hawk Year Round Adventure Park, and the Grand Prairie Public Library, and the Peace Library System. So lots of great staff and volunteers and all those organizations that are doing some really great work to increase recreation opportunities, and increase literacy, and increase community connection or community. So really appreciated hearing from, from those groups. I also want to highlight that the, in the chief service area update, we heard that there are four family physicians who have enrolled in our Family Physician Attraction and Retention Program. And so just really want to highlight that there has been significant work going in by council to help make sure that there are adequate medical professionals in this community. So thankful for all the people that are working in that. And then finally, we had an update on how things are going at the Legion Field, as we're looking at some renovations there. And we also had some updates on how various neighborhoods grew or declined between our last two census. So lots of great information on both those that people can find if they go look for the agenda package on the website.
Perfect. Thanks for that, councillor Pressy. Moving on to item 8.2, the Financial Administrative Services Committee meeting held July 22, 2025. Turn this one over to councillor Berg for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move councillor adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held July 22 as presented.
Thanks for that motion, councillor Berg. That is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, councillor Berg?
Yes, Mayor Clayton. Chief White Wayne and her team have been very busy on a number of things. Financial management, administration working through variance, variance analysis and forecasting with departments, compiling data for the Q2 report, and continuing with the 2026 budget preparation, along with support, along with evaluation of the ad set management system. Taxation and assessment penalties were levied at the beginning of July for accounts with outstanding 2025 taxes, and administration is reaching out to customers where taxes may have been twice, paid twice, or payment was made to the county instead of the city, or vice versa. Procure and supply chain management, there are 91 competitive opportunities that have been created to date in 2025, and they cover a broad range of areas. So a number of businesses across Grand Prairie can look at this, concrete grinding, tree planting, ditch work, asphalt crack, ceiling, commercial upgrades, janitorial, along with traffic signal work, and in geographical, yeah, geographical and information technology services. Coordinated efforts are underway to define the integrated emergency communication center computer automated dispatch implementation and deployment requirements. So those are some of the highlights from our last meeting.
Thanks for that, councillor Berg. Moving on to the Operational Services Committee meeting held July 22, 2025. And I'll turn that one over to councillor O'Toole for introduction.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move councillor adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held July 22 as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Press see in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, councillor O'Toole?
I've got a few here. I'm just getting them up on the queue. And here we go. They are not coming up. We'll be a team, the Berg-O'Toole team. Chief Opinion Officer Brian Glavine presented the committee an update on the current and projected activities planned throughout the service area. Engineering and transportation services, the following have been posted. An RFQ, brochure ditch work, an RFQ, asphalt crack ceiling, and there are various locations throughout the city. RFT, 103rd Street, commercial road upgrade, and that would be in the Trader Ridge neighborhood. And an RFP, engineering services for traffic signal repair and replacement program. And as well, the following have closed, the RFP, engineering services for road rehab program for 26, 27, and the RFT, copperwood ditch work. Corporate facility management, the Center 2000 sundial brick remediation project started last week, and the RCMP Parkade remediation, remediation.
Fix it.
Sorry, the tongue is not working with the brain right now. Remediation in the nearing completion. Transit services, transit ridership was up 4.8% from January to June 25. Compared to the same period in '24, administration received a request to provide on-demand service for the Meadowview Trailer Park. There will be no cost or current service level impacts. And with residential development, we had one, one regarding residential development within the central commercial district, and that's all from my report.
Thanks for that, councillor O'Toole. Moving on to the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held July 22, 2025. I'll turn this one over to councillor Thiessen for introduction.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that councillor adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, July 22 as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Councillor Thiessen in favor.
Councillor O'Connor in favor.
Press see in favor.
Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Some highlights from your meeting, councillor Thiessen.
Certainly, Mayor Clayton. Thank you. Yeah, committee received a good news report from Catherine Ridgway, the Director of Events and Programming, presenting on the pilot project that was held at the Bose Center in the Bonnet Energy Center. That was in regards to adding some court space for tennis players. Everything seems to be going really well there. The only negative that was talked about was potentially the slippery floors, but the tennis community was really, really happy. And based off of enrollments, it's been a net positive in the finances. So we'll hope to, to grow this and see that sport grow in our community as well, hopefully through that extra space we just added. And enforcement services, an enforcement campaign has been focused on the unauthorized use of engine retarder brakes, aka Jake brakes, within the city limits, and has been launched in support of the noise nuisance and disturbances bylaw. Officers are issuing $250 fines to drivers who create excessive and unnecessary noise by using these brakes in prohibited areas. And for those members of our community who have complained about motorcycles and loud mufflers and other stuff, those too will be included as well. This campaign is just focused on the Jake brakes. So we're looking to make the streets a little more sound-free, soundproof, peaceful. Yeah, there we go. Also, on July 2050, International Day of Time, we had the annual Archie Harvey Memorial Golf Tournament held at the Dunes Golf Course. Funds raised for this tournament were donated to many community organizations, including Camp Hilaheart. And in case you don't know who Corporal Archie Harvey is, he was an RCMP officer who lost his life in the line of duty on June 23, 1967, and this tournament honors his memory. And speaking of that, in talking of loss of life, loss of life is never an easy thing, but our RCMP leadership is ensuring the members who were involved with the tragic incident last, two Friday evenings ago in the rural area north of the city that found one, one person dead at the end of it, they're ensuring that those officers are getting appropriate support following this tragedy. The summer blast pass sales have officially wrapped up on July 14 and have surpassed the previous year's sales passes must be redeemed by August 9 if you got one. So keep using them and keep having a blast in the summertime here in Grand Prairie. Also, upcoming events that might be of interest to the community, coming up this weekend on August 2, we have the International Heritage Days. And then later on in the summer, at the end of the month, the City of Grand Prairie will be hosting Experience GP, August 29 downtown on 101st Ave. And shortly after that, of course, we have other events such as Grand Con and the Cirque Musica Holiday Wonderland 2025 Tour, which was announced for December 3 at Bonnet Energy Center. Besides those events and all the other happenings, that is my report, Mayor Clayton. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that, councillor Thiessen. Appreciate that update. Moving on now to item 8.5, the council committee of the whole meeting, which is also held on July 22, 2025. The, the minutes are there, rather. There's one item, so we will need a, a motion for the minutes, and there's one item of business as a result of that meeting. Recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move councillor adopt the minutes of the council meeting of the whole meeting held July 22 as presented.
Thank you for that. The motion is in order. Call the question. Please vote. Councillor Berg, how do you vote?
Councillor Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Councillor O'Connor was one item of business as a result of that meeting.
Yes, thank you. The proposal has been made by the village of Husar, and they are moving that midwifery be set up throughout the whole province, and they asked the City of Grand Prairie if they would help sponsor this. I think this is an important move to reduce costs, and especially in rural Alberta, where midwifery would really take pressure off of the hospitals. off of the hospitals throughout the whole province. So, I think we will support that. So I'd like to move that we accept this motion.
All right. So councillor O'Connor's motion is to approve the seconding of the village of Husar's midwifery resolution. That resolution is in council's package. And as mentioned, every annual Alberta municipalities meeting, there are a number of resolutions that come forward from multiple municipalities. AB Munis in the last year changed the expectation that it has a combination of a larger municipality as well as a smaller. So, this one is being brought forward from a smaller municipality and being seconded by us if council chooses to approve this motion here today. So I see no one else in the queue, and I'll call the question. Please vote.
Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to number nine correspondence in today's agenda, there is one item of correspondence in your package, council. Item 9.1, the letter we received, or I received, from the Royal Canadian Mounted Police. Really, this is an introduction letter from the new Alberta deputy commissioner, Mr. Trevor Drew. Just wanted to bring it forward for your information, as this letter was there, as really just an introduction from him, and offering their support, and opening the door for any questions that we may have. So, just looking to receive this for information. Councillor Bressi.
I'll move that we accept this letter for information. Definitely appreciate Deputy Commissioner Drew taking the time to write this letter. Also note that he recently met with the Alberta Municipalities Board, and so he definitely has been engaging with municipalities, which I appreciate.
Perfect. Thanks for that. That motion is in order. So I'll call the question. Please vote.
Berg in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to number 10, delegation business. So, if you recall earlier, at this meeting, we had one delegation, Ms. Sadie Macklin, who came to council to speak about an opportunity in increasing awareness of transit, as well as increasing the knowledge of the value of transit. And so now an opportunity for questions for administration, or any business that may be arising. Recognizing councillor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just a question for administration. Typically, we refresh our transit master plan once every 10 years. I think our last iteration, and I could be wrong on this, because I know we've changed the routes, was back in 2015. When are we scheduled to take another look at the transit master plan?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do not have the answer offhand, but I can do my best to get it to you in timely fashion.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I look forward to actually, I have a motion, but I know I saw a bunch of buttons. Yeah, I want to see what the conversation goes. Yeah, thank you.
And just speaking to your question, the transit master plan, you are correct. However, there was changes that were made this term to it, quite significant, but not the whole master plan. But recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I was a question for administration. Have we looked at adding temporary traffic lights at the top of the Muscat CP Park? And I'm wondering just to help move those people there, instead of having staff do it, have temporary lights that are red light cameras. Is that a possibility? And the second thing is to look at expanding bus service on the nights of the Bear Creek Festival, and what kind of cost that would impact our budget if we were to extend the hours of service to get people home after the festival?
I'll refer to the CAO, Mr. Burke.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm willing to take both those questions away to see if there's ways we can improve the pedestrian flow, as well as what the cost for additional hours would be. That's something that I can look at in a timely fashion and action appropriately.
Great. Thanks for that. Recognizing councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. And I'd highlight not just Bear Creek Folk Festival, but Canada Day, it's also something that I definitely noticed was an issue at Canada Day, too. But add New Year's as well. Yeah. So, not just definitely an issue at Bear Creek Folk Festival, but anytime we get thousands of people in that park, it's definitely an issue I've noticed. So, thankful for that being raised. Definitely, I heard that we've got a colleague who wants to get business done, so I won't make a motion that I prepared yet. We'll see how things go. But one thing I will note is, I do appreciate that we promote transit during Earth Day. But for me, I would love to see us at least do a one-time shot, and if it goes well, maybe make it a recurring thing outside of Earth Day as well. For me, Earth Day can be a busy day where you go into multiple events, I think, especially with new councillors coming in. Can be a really good part of their kind of learning curve and orientation to get out there and talk to drivers, talk to passengers on a service that maybe they haven't used before. So I think it could be great for new councillors. But also, in terms of public awareness, I'd love to, for me, there are a lot of reasons that we encourage transit use. And the environment's a big one, an important one, but also it's something that it increases, it encourages social connection. The more people we get on transit, the more cost-effective it becomes, so that we can afford to have transit for the people that can't afford or don't have the abilities to use a vehicle. There's, when we get people on buses, it means we don't have to expand our road networks to the same degree, and we can save money there. And I think that, for me, if we're going to talk about activities or events to expand transit, I'd love to have those outside of Earth Day, so that we can talk about all the benefits of it. For some people, the environment's a big priority, for others it's not. And I think if we're saying, hey, we're just leaning to Earth Day to promote it, I think that maybe we're not doing the full service we should to this conversation.
Mr. Burke.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. If there's a motion being formed for a day like that, one suggestion I would give is, is it not to be specific to a day, let us propose something. Right now, we do provide free transit on Earth Day, as well as Canada Day and Election Day is another suite. But they're all days where both council and administration have limited capacity to expand. So the idea of having a day where we can answer questions, I think is something we could implement with another free day of transit. But for us to go away and to come back with a proposal on what day that could be, would be my suggestion if there's a motion.
Councillor Thiessen.
Great, I got a motion. And in that motion, I would direct administration to bring back a report to committee in regards to transit, how we can improve ridership from where it already is now, and increase efficiency, and float the idea of a transit days. Now, the reason why I say days is, I wasn't stuck on Earth Day. I know it's kind of sloppy, but one of the ideas that I had floating around is, since we have free transit for youth 17 and under, might be a good day on the first days of school to give parents a chance to ride the transit, so they can help their kids get acclimated to the transit schedule buses, stuff like that. So, we're talking New Year's, we're talking Canada Day, we're talking Bear Creek Folk Festival, we're talking Stompede. There's lots of ways and things that the city can do as far as offering a transit day slash days to help improve ridership. But really, at the heart of this is, please bring back a report to committee on how we can increase ridership and efficiency of the transit system in Grand Prairie.
Mr. Burke.
Thinking of the three parts to that motion, the third part is something we can easily action and bring back, a recommendation on a transit day or days. The first two were didn't have sufficient clarity for me to action on efficiencies and promotions. We did have a 41.7% increase in transit ridership from 2023 to 2024, and as councillor O'Toole mentioned earlier, a 4.8% increase in ridership in the first six months of this year, or the first six months of last year. And so there are some things happening. I'm unclear whether the days part is being, just the scope is being expanded into to a report. I'm just unclear exactly what you're looking for beyond the day, in the days.
Yeah, maybe I'm trying to squeeze something a little extra in there. I really feel like Ms. Macklin came in here today saying, hey, we need to promote transit more, we need to find ways to get more riders on the bus. And I think council, we've done a great job of increasing the ridership. But how do we get even more on there? So it's one thing if, you know, you got 24% ridership and there's only 100 riders, that means that's 124 people in the city of Grand Prairie that's riding the transit. I think the hope here that was expressed today is that hopefully we can improve overall numbers in our total demographics, not just the people who are currently riding and adding on to the system. So that's why I had those first two parts. How do we increase ridership? How do we increase efficiency? And you know what? If that's too confusing, I know we're about a year or two away from potentially putting out to a consultant to talk about a transit master plan, and that can be there. If council would rather, or administration would rather me just send this away to direct administration to bring back proposals for a transit day or days that we could do, then I can drop the first two parts of the motion and just go with the last one, and we can continue these conversations and the great work we're already doing going forward.
I do have others in the queue. I have a friendly suggestion, though. If it interests you, councillor Thiessen, I think that with your exploration of finding a free transit day or days, you may be interested in having administration coming back with a plan of how to increase awareness on transit. So just a simple marketing campaign of, you know, does everybody know that under 17 is free? Does everybody know that, you know, just more awareness of how efficient our service currently is, and how we're continually growing it and expanding it. Maybe it's just transit awareness improvement that needs to be there. So, something for you to consider. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I definitely appreciate where the motion's going, but I wouldn't be comfortable with, unless we did do that friendly amendment of striking the improved ridership and increased efficiency. And I just really want to highlight that I've seen administration working very hard on both efficiency and ridership. And I know you have as well, councillor Thiessen, you nod across the room. And I'm really happy with the operational things that I'm seeing. And also, I really want to be leery of, I don't want to get too far into operations and start really micromanaging how one particular service area is done. But I am comfortable dipping in saying, hey, we want to do a day on this, because for me, that day is, I want council to give its time to folks a day. And I think it's very appropriate for us to say, hey, we as a council, or I guess this will be the next council, but we as councillors want to have more touchpoints with us on this, both so that we can learn about it, but also so that we can use our own time, our own energy, our own channels to better promote it. And so, for me personally, I'm really eager to support a motion that's talking about council spending a day doing this. I'm leery of additional things, because they're already happening, and I don't want to get too far into the management sandbox.
Councillor O'Connor.
Yes, thanks very much. Councillor Bressi, I really appreciated your points. What I did want, and I think we should be concentrating on, is increasing the level of service after big events. And if it means that you have to pay to have a bus to get home after midnight, you know, should we look at creating a special pass that you buy, so you can just get on the bus and make it home, and we reduce the amount of traffic down to that area? And I'd be, I think that's something that's different, increasing service and getting people home safely and late at night. So, I don't think we have to have too many free days, but I'd like having the, you know, Earth Day and one that we sit on the buses, and we talk to residents and talk about the importance. And I agree with the mayor on increasing the promotion. And so, I would say, taking some of those parts out would make it a lot better. So, I appreciate it.
Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. You'd mentioned awareness, and so my question for administration is around marketing. Are we doing any marketing? I know about 15, 20 years ago, there was a radio jingle that I could still sing, but I'm not going to.
Let's see.
No, 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 maybe off camera, but it was about taking it easy and taking the bus. And so, I'm just kind of curious, are we doing any type of marketing now, be it social media or otherwise?
Maybe I could ask Ms. Bailey if you happen to know if there's current transit marketing that's happening, or if there's certain times of the year that we would prefer to choose to highlight that.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We're happy to bring back a robust update on that, and just make sure we do the full scope justice.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Thiessen.
Is there anybody else in the queue, Mayor Clayton?
There's not, go for it.
All right. So, if council's willing, I would be willing to drop the first two parts of the motion and direct administration to bring back opportunities to create a transit day and a public awareness campaign around transit. Period.
Perfect. That motion is in order. Just give a minute for legislators services to get it in the queue. Councillor Thiessen, does that reflect what you were hoping?
Well, yes. As far as the most recent motion, I'll keep my high hopes for the future.
Okay.
Going forward with transit.
Okay. So that motion is in order. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Since we are at a good point in time, and our evening delegation may be a little lengthy, I'm going to suggest that we have a council roundtable now, of just look for a motion to change that. Recognizing councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that we amend the agenda to move council member reports to now the agenda. Don't let that get wordsmithed, however.
Perfect. Thank you for that. That motion is in order, so please vote. And that carries unanimously. I'm going to start with councillor Bressi, because he's going to set the tone on the appropriate length of a council member update.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Actually, spent a good amount of the last two weeks out of town. I did a roadshow for Alberta Municipalities, did a few member visits, also had an executive committee meeting. And then I went to the Pacific Northwest Economic Region Conference, and just really appreciated the opportunity to be with some of my colleagues, meet with both industry leaders, but also legislators and government leaders from across Northwestern US and Western Canada, and really start some of those conversations that are more important now than ever before. Because I was out of town so much, I didn't get to do a lot of local things, other than a few coffee meetings with various residents, which I always appreciate. But I also want to give a special shout out to Duff and Carol Carrar, who I know many of us know, got to go to their 50th wedding anniversary, and hear some stories about Grand Prairie 50 years ago. So, can't believe they're already at 50. They sure don't, they sure have a lot more energy than you'd expect for that. But congratulations, Duff and Carol.
Thanks for that, councillor Bressi. Councillor Thiessen.
Oh, sure, make me follow the one-minute wonder. Yeah, no, it's been a great couple of weeks here recently. Had several stakeholder meetings with members of council, led by the mayor, and all of those meetings with Aqua Terra, the Friendship Centre, and Odyssey House, were all on the list. As far as other stuff, I also had four coffees with prospective candidates in the upcoming municipal election. We'll see how many of them file their paperworks. And then for events that I've noted, I got three here. One was the Esclapius Camp Volunteers. Myself, councillor Berg, and councillor O'Toole were able to go on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie and the Invest GP team to welcome all the future doctors, nurses, and specialists that were helping to volunteer over the summer in their medical camp journey. Surprisingly enough, I thought we were going to get most of the kids from Edmonton and Calgary, but about a third of the group were all local to the Peace Region. So that's really good, knowing that even in their summer, they're taking the time to come back and to learn and engage right there at the hospital. So it was awesome to have those conversations and to sit down for dinner with them for the one day. I also got to attend with councillor O'Connor the Reading U graduation ceremony, where, I mean, I know we've all been to the ceremonies. I think I've been to everyone since I've been elected. This is such a great program created by the Side Sisters, Linda and Rhonda, as far as teaching kids how to learn how to love to read. And I say learn how to love to read, because if you have reading issues, it's always a struggle trying to comprehend what is actually being said between each space of those words. So, giving these kids the confidence and building that up, and having new friendships forged in this summertime program is such a beautiful thing, and it's the least of what I think we all could do, just to attend the graduation and cheer these kids on. Finally, the last is more of a hit home. It was drinks for John Laners over at the John Laners property. I was joined by many members of council there. I won't single anybody out. There's lots of members from the community. We lost a living legend when John passed away on this council. And sure, councillor Platt is filling his seat right now, but I always wonder what could be if John was here for this whole term. And I've thought that every year around this time. So it was nice to be able to go and show our support to John, Donna, and all their family in their incredible loss. And Grand Prairie was incredibly blessed to have him in their life, not just on council, but on the school board and in the community. So many great things that John created in this community. And it was just really, really awesome to be able to sit there with council. And it was just really, really awesome to be able to sit there with council and to share a memory for a day of truly great Grand Prairie. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Teason. Councillor O'Connor, or O'Toole rather.
You got us two confused?
Nope.
Okay, I'm going to cut mine short here a little bit. I did attend on Saturday a 65th wedding anniversary of Ivan and Sylvia Romkus. They arrived four years after they got married to Grand Prairie. Their kids started school and I got to hang out with the Romkusses in 1967. And so that was a great, great event and everybody's doing good. And also, we attended, a number of us attended the, what is it now? The Wonder Valley Invest Northwest Wonder Valley presentation and dinner. And that was very interesting and lots of positive statements were made. So all we can do now was wait for the investments to come in and things to come together and we'll have that. Also, we had a stakeholder with Odyssey House, Hope Hub presentation. And I also want to just speak up about the Special Olympics. I never, I mentioned it last time, but I want to thank all the law enforcement people that were in the torch run, the sheriffs, the RCMP, the Grand Prairie Police Service and members of all the other police forces in Alberta for coming to Grand Prairie and representing and supporting the Special Olympics. So with that, thank you.
Thanks for that councillor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I attended a few events that councillor Teason had mentioned, so I'll stick to generally new stuff. A number of us went on a fire hall tour and it's not the first time I've taken the tour, but I always do learn something new. And one of the highlights was seeing Chief Lemieux's sharp looking younger photo on the wall. And yeah, it was great to see. It's got a lineup of all of the retired chiefs up there. And so I always appreciate that and Chief Lemieux's dedication to the city long term. We talked about fire trucks, the costs around them, their usages. And it's not getting any cheaper, but I think if you were to ask people across the city, they would see that it's a worthwhile investment. So again, fire trucks, not cheap, but an absolute necessity. And I also attended the Wonder Valley Dinner that was held out at the Philip J Curry Dinosaur Museum. And really good presentation, but I actually really enjoyed sitting down with some of the team that they had brought in from around the globe. Sitting to my left was a gentleman from Dubai with an IT background and to my right was a gentleman from New York with an investment background. And he'd mentioned two of the investment companies that he works with, and I won't necessarily name drop, but very deep pockets in the sporting worlds, almost household names. So there's some real big players around this. And I did appreciate learning their business model, which gave me a lot more optimism on how they're going to make this happen because again, it is a multi-billion dollar investment. And to keep it nice and short like councillor Bressi, I'll wrap it up there.
Thanks for that. Recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Most of the events have been mentioned already. And we did meet with Champions Gym Kids, couple of weeks with them. And always a special time when the young kids come in and learn about municipal government. And met and greet with the Filipino Association. And also attended the Filipino Basketball Championships and teams from all over came. And I have to do a shout out for Pinwar. It met all billing, that this was a tremendous event. People wanted to talk to us. They wanted to talk to us about trade, about being friends, about being neighbors. And I was very, very encouraged and I hope I never, ever not get to go to Pinwar ever again. And that's my report, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that councillor O'Connor. I don't have a lot to add in addition to what was already brought up. I will say I too enjoyed the conversation with the O'Leary Group and the, our municipal colleagues at the county and the MD of Greenview. Looking forward to learning more. We had the opportunity to tour them on a bus through our community and show them some highlights that would be valuable in their venture. And so I thought that was a great day, really collaborative in the approach between the multiple municipalities. I also had the opportunity to have lunch with a founding, I would say, a significant resident of Grand Prairie. I took Margaret Bowes recently to lunch and it was great to catch up with her and wanted to congratulate her for the awards that she won in the Northern Alberta Foundation's Newly Minted Event 7 over 70. So that was a great lunch to be able to catch up with her. Also with my colleagues, had a meeting with the Filipino Association of Grand Prairie and Area, great to catch up on what they're doing and some of their initiatives. And then most recently, had a meeting with the deputy chair of the Grand Prairie Police Service Police Commission, Natalia Ryman. So things have been very busy and just wanted to thank my colleagues for their participation in the many meetings that we have had as of late. So with that, I will call this meeting adjourned and see you again at 6 o'clock. Thanks so much.
Good evening and welcome back to the City Council meeting of July 28, 2025. Tonight, we're going to start with two delegations and then we'll go into public hearings. First, under delegations, item 14 point one, Teresa McNeil, if you wanted to come forward. Is Teresa McNeil here? Okay, I'll just call another time to see if Teresa McNeil is here. Okay, I'm going to go on to the second delegation if Ms. McNeil shows up. Then I'll call her after. So we go to Ms. Jody Dreyer next. Come on forward, Jody. Once you're situated, the microphones are on. They're not attached to the table, so please feel free to pull it closer to you. Take five minutes to address council, and then council may have questions for you. And then we deal with the delegation business of this evening at the end of our meeting.
If I may, Mayor Clayton?
Yes.
Yeah, seeing as a delegation is partner and mother of my child, I would like to declare conflict of interest in the sake of holding the baby.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you removing yourselves from the chamber? Or are you just sitting back there? All right. Welcome.
Hello. So my presentation was actually to follow Ms. McNeil's.
Okay.
So I'll just kind of go from there. So initially, I was going to follow Teresa's presentation with the request that council consider adding fluoride removal to the ballot for October 20th. But after having several conversations in the community, concluded that there are many people in the region who still need to be educated on fluoride facts and fictions. So today, I would like to ask council to consider this a high priority for engagement and initiate engagement on whether or not Aquatera should be fluoridating the water. In the public engagement policy, reason for policy 2.6 says to ensure an appropriate level of level of public engagement based on assessed community impact and benefit." I'd like to ask council or administration, what is considered acceptable engagement? Is there a goal or target set for each engagement based on assessed impact and benefit? And before administration lists off the procedures and processes, I'd like for you to consider the issue as important as the implementation of a municipal police force receiving only 758 online responses and 88 people showing up to two in-person events. And so no offense meant for the staff who organize these events, but I could have gotten at least 88 people to show up by putting a funny sign, and it would have only cost the city and taxpayers $150. How many people here tonight, if given the chance to vote, would remove fluoride from the city water? I just engaged 20 people in five seconds, and it costs nothing. So being that, oh, let me go up here. Public Engagement Process 5.8 says that it will involve council in the planning for high priority public engagement projects. So being the impact of injecting a neurotoxin into the water supply significantly impacts everyone, I would like to ask council to form a committee, which includes at least two members of council and up to five members of the public, as well as including the County of Grand Prairie and Sexsmith. This committee will be tasked with true public engagement, which will hold town hall style events with expert and witness speakers, giving residents an opportunity to ask questions for everyone in attendance to hear their responses. Surveys have a purpose, but I believe a more effective way to engage the public is to host the public rather than meet and greet mingling or sponsored Facebook ads. I searched high and low on the city website to get the number of people who attended the three open houses on secondary suites, which was held over the course of only one week, but I couldn't find those results. I actually tried searching for any results besides the municipal police force, but again came up empty-handed. It would be my assumption that the results would only indicate 1% to 2% overall engagement of the population. So if I can leave council with these additional comments and suggestions, it would be to strongly consider engaging the public more when it comes to projects that will cost taxpayers millions of dollars, like a world-class soccer pitch. Asking residents questions like, "Do you think the city needs a facility of this size?" or "Do you think that the city of Grand Prairie should be responsible for ongoing operational costs?" Would have likely resulted in a no from many residents. Now, not against soccer or building soccer pitches, but I remember GP Gymnix fundraising for literally two decades to get their facility, when it's likely that the city could build 10 small pitches in various neighborhoods for the same cost as this one. So I have no doubt that fluoride and engagement will be the topic of discussion as we approach the coming elections, and I look forward to those conversations. So thank you for listening and your consideration to my request.
Thanks for that. Open it up to council for any questions. Okay, I see no one in the queue with questions, so thanks for being here tonight. Moving on to item number 16, sorry, I'll apologize. Is Ms. McNeil here? Come on forward. Same thing, take five minutes to address council, and if council has any questions, they'll follow, following your presentation.
Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Teresa Kachuski-McNeil, and I've lived-
Just pull the microphone a little closer to you. It's not attached. There you go.
Okay, and I've lived in the city of Grand Prairie and the county of Grand Prairie since 2001, and I love it here. Water health is an important topic for me, and I do spend time, in my personal time, sort of researching and whatever. So what I wanted to talk today to you about was, is our, the fluoridation of the water here. Aqua Terra is adding fluoride at 0.7 milligrams per liter, and in a way, I kind of can call it mass medicating a population without their consent. People don't even know it's there. There's recent court decisions that have been made in the United States, and there's lots of new research happening that does bring this issue to light. It does look like fluoride is good for our teeth, but we all seem to use fluoridated toothpaste, and that is more than enough. And maybe adding it to the water is looking like it's causing other health effects. So there's four main concerns I want to touch on. Number one, the Food and Water Watch Incorporated versus the Environmental Protection Agency. This court battle went on from 2016 to 2024, and the judge ruled in favor of Food and Water Watch that with all the research he had to look at, fluoride does cause health problems. Number two, loss of IQ in children. The study was done in Canada, actually. They followed 1,200 pregnant women, and when all the kids that were born were four years old, they did an IQ test. Now, 60% of the women were on fluoridated water and 40% weren't. So these four-year-old kids that had mothers that were drinking fluoridated water had an IQ deficit on average, three to five IQ points. And I'll add that an official lead poisoning diagnosis starts at an IQ deficit of five IQ points. So there's kind of a scary similarity there. There's also a significant risk to developing, to development disorders. There was a cohort of 74,000 children in Florida enrolled in a study for 10 years, and basically, kids that were on fluoridated water at 0.7 milligrams per liter for the first 10 years of their life were significantly at greater risk to autism, autistic spec, autism spectrum disorder, attention deficit disorder, and specific delays in development. The third thing is dental fluorosis, and does fluoridated water even prevent cavities anymore? There was a huge study done by the Cochrane Collaboration, and they looked at 150 studies, and basically, they, they couldn't decide with all the studies that they had looked at if fluoride, if fluoride was removed from water, would there even be a negative impact on teeth? Because we're all using fluoridated toothpaste, the fluoridated water isn't necessary anymore, is basically what they came up with. Well, the other thing that they did notice in their studies is that 12% of the people on fluoridated water at 0.7 milligrams per liter would develop dental fluorosis. The fourth thing I want to talk about is the personal financial cost associated on a family when they want to try to remove fluoride from their tap water. So the most effective way to remove fluoride is with reverse osmosis system. I called Culligan here in town, and to get an under-the-tap system in your kitchen would cost $2,600, plus you have to do annual maintenance. If you wanted to do the whole house, it's going to cost $16,000. If you wanted to go a cheaper route and do a gravity feed on your counter system like a Berkey, if you need, you know, the family-size one, they're $750 now. The filters are $100 each. And I will add that the fluoride-specific filter for the Berkey is, is filled with an alumina epoxy resin or something, and basically, it removes the fluoride, but it adds aluminum oxide to the filtered water in order to do the ion exchange. And they don't tell you that. So you're, so they remove the fluoride, but now you're drinking aluminum oxide. And anyways, I appreciate you listening to my little, basically, just, just consortium of, of facts about fluoride and things that we need to consider if it ever comes up on the table, whether we should continue on or not. Might be good for our teeth, not very good for our brains, is what it's looking like.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here tonight. Just wait, just one second, in case there's any counselors that have questions for you. And I see none, so thank you for being here. Oh, I apologize. Counselor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming in, Ms. McNeil. It's been a discussion, as long as I've been on council, every iteration, we discuss fluoride and the merits of doing so. A lot of times, it comes back to council, this is a political decision, when it could just very well be an operational decision by Aqua Terra as well. But we're mindful that there are other people that don't always agree on the same thing all the time, so some people might want fluoride out, some people might not. If the city of Grand Prairie were to move forward at any point in having the discussion to remove fluoride, what do you think the best way to go about that? Would it be an operational decision by Aqua Terra, a council vote decision between nine people sitting around the table, or potentially a plebiscite where the entire community could vote for?
On the Health Canada website, they specifically say that this is a municipal, they leave it in, in the responsibility of the municipalities to make the decision. It would definitely help if the citizens were on board, one way or the other. Not sure how, there's still a lot of people that are in support of fluoride, regardless of what the new research says.
So are you saying that this shouldn't just rest at a council table or within the operations of Aqua Terra, but potentially should be held for the whole community to have their voice heard, at least, in, in this discussion?
I would prefer, if it came down to whether it was up to Aqua Terra or council, I would prefer council. Yeah.
And not like a big vote, like a plebiscite or anything?
I mean, yes, but I have, like, I, just discussions I've looked at, followed on social media, it is very, it's a really tight race. I really don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, so we're going to move into item number 16 of today's agenda, public hearing. We have one public hearing today. I'd like to call this public hearing to order, and look to introduction from administration. I'll turn it over to Ms. Downing.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Administration has received an application that includes the following. Rezoning from IB Industrial Business District to a new direct control district, DC 39. Removal of a municipal reserve designation to enable site access, and a request to declare the MR parcel marketable and approve its sale to the adjacent landowner. The subject site is located at the intersection of 108th Street and Pinnacle Drive, directly north of the Pinnacle Ridge neighborhood. Surrounding uses include industrial development to the north, future business industrial to the west, and low-density residential development to the south. The site is currently zoned IB Industrial Business, which allows industrial and service commercial uses, including limited outdoor storage. The MR parcel is zoned Small Lot Residential, as an extension of the nearby residential district. The proposed DC 39 zoning would support a range of commercial uses compatible with nearby residential areas and the adjacent park. Key regulations include height limits, four stories for the office and mixed use, and two stories for all other buildings, consistent facade materials on all sides facing residential areas, streets and the park, and enhanced landscaping and design requirements. The, okay, and, sorry, this shows the rezoning.
Just give me one second, Ms. Downing. Counselor Plot, oh, there we go. Counselor Plot's microphone is live. We're good. Continue, please.
Okay. The MR removal is proposed to allow two access points to the site. An all-directional access approximately 100 meters west of 108th Street, and a write-in-only access approximately 70 meters from 108th Street. That would be in addition to the access that would already be approved on 108th Street. A traffic impact assessment was completed and accepted by the engineering department. It confirms that the road network can support the development, provided that roadway upgrades are completed prior to the development. This slide shows the specific MR area proposed for removal. It totals 0.046 hectares and forms part of the site access plan. Under the Municipal Government Act, council can remove a municipal reserve designation. This requires advertising and a public hearing, and the proceeds of the sale must be used for parks, recreation, or school board use. Policy 602 Land Management also applies. It guides how the city buys, sells, and leases land, and ensures all transactions are fair, transparent, and compliant with legislation. The application was advertised in line with Municipal Government Act and the land use bylaw. Notices were mailed to properties within 60 meters. There was onsite signage. It was posted on the city's website, and the developer held a public session and submitted a summary of feedback. Concerns raised include traffic, park protection, and compatibility with nearby residential areas. Some participants offered conditional support based on these issues being addressed. Administration recommends that council give three readings to bylaw C 1260-199. Approve the removal of MR designation from 0.046 hectares of the lot, and declare the land marketable and approve its sale, subject to conditions. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your presentation, Ms. Downing. I'm now going to go to, or open it up to council for questions, for administration. Recognizing Counselor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for the presentation, Ms. Downing. Quick question, sorry, I was trying to figure it out myself, but can you point out the area that is the municipal reserve section again?
Thank you through the mayor. On the slide, this is the area of municipal reserve that is being proposed to be removed. Is that the question?
Yeah, is that all the access points there, and then the lead-up to the access?
Thank you through the mayor.
Yes, cool, thank you.
Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. This is a very unusual parcel of land. So I'm just kind of curious what the original idea was for access points. It was mentioned there's a write-in, write-out. Was there also other plans, say, to the north or from the west, that this parcel of land would have been accessed because, or was it just simply a write-in, write-out?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you through the mayor. On the slide here, this shows what the access would be if this rezoning were not to take place, and the redesignation. There's an access at 110th Street, and that goes through the industrial area, and then the write-in, write-out off 108th Street.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Pressy?
Great, thank you. I'm curious, so if I'm understanding the map correctly, on the green space, just north of Pinnacle Drive, there is a fence that encloses that playground area. You would be losing a section of the fence with the intention be that the, that fencing would be replaced, or the green space would go right open to that access?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you through the mayor. I would have to check on that, but that could be a condition of the development permit, that the fence be maintained along that park area, perhaps?
Mr. Johnson? Anything to add? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Seeing no further questions, I'm going to move to the presentation and submission portion of this public hearing. I will ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of this land use bylaw amendment. Please come forward. Once you're situated, if you could introduce yourself for those who might be watching from home. The microphone, as I said, isn't attached to the table, so please pull it closer to yourself. And once you're done your presentation, council may have some questions. Thanks.
Good evening, council and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I won't revisit the background of the application, as it's already been covered by administration. Instead, I'd like to focus on the planning rationale, key technical findings, and public concerns we've heard, and ultimately, why this development is the right decision for the site and for the city of Grand Prairie. The subject site is located directly on 108th Street, one of the city's busiest and most prominent corridors. If ever there was a location suited for commercial development, this is it. Currently, the site is zoned industrial. That means the developer could submit an application tomorrow for an industrial use, and as long as it complies, it could proceed with no consultation or discretion. Instead, they are proposing a direct control district to allow for commercial development, a more sensitive, better-fitting use, and are bringing it forward through a public and trans- transparent process. From a planning perspective, this makes sense. Commercial development acts as a buffer separating residential areas from more intensive industrial uses. It provides walkable amenities to the neighborhood and aligns with cities' transition between land uses. This is Planning 101. Now, commercial development at this location only works if it has access to 108th Street and Pinnacle Drive. We've heard suggestions that 110th Street should be used instead, but that is not viable for commercial. Commercial uses rely on visibility, exposure, and convenient access. 110th Street is suitable for industrial users, not community-serving retail. And without access to 108th Street and Pinnacle Drive, this site cannot function as intended. We know the proposed access to Pinnacle Drive is the biggest source of concern. You'll hear those concerns tonight. Increased traffic, pedestrian safety, access to the park, winter road conditions, these are all outlined in the engagement report following the open house we held in June. I want to acknowledge those concerns. We understand that this proposal has created strong emotions in the community. I want to share a quick example that helps frame this. When cannabis was first legalized, I led a consultation on where cannabis stores should be located. We received over 2,000 responses, many of them emotionally charged. Concerns about crime, impaired driving, kids, community values, but today cannabis stores are just another retail use. They're in malls, on main streets, they faded into the background. My point is, emotions are valid, but they evolve, and they should not be the sole basis for decision-making. That's why we rely on facts, data, and technical analysis, like the traffic impact assessment completed by ISL Engineering. It confirms that the proposed intersection improvements, including a new left-turn lane with a green arrow signal, crosswalk relocation, a deceleration lane, and median modifications, the access from Pinnacle Drive will operate safely and efficiently. The TIA modeled the highest potential traffic generating uses even under that scenario. The intersection functions well, and within the city's standards for peak hour performance. And if the site were to develop with less intense use, the impacts would be even lower. As for public input, the feedback was clear. The commercial zoning itself is not an issue. In fact, many residents prefer commercial to industrial, and appreciate the neighborhood's serving intent. The concern is access, and we've addressed it through clear evidence, thoughtful design, and the inclusion of mitigation measures directly within the direct control district regulations. So here's the bottom line. This development deserves approval, not just because it meets technical requirements, but because it's better for the neighborhood, better for the corridor, and better for the city. We are taking a parcel of land for industrial use and transforming it into a community-focused, visually attractive, pedestrian-friendly, commercial development that will enhance the area for years to come. It's supported by good planning, it's backed by strong technical data, and this isn't just about access, it's about progress. So to wrap up, we'd like to present two short traffic simulation videos that illustrate the modeled intersection performance under two scenarios. You'll see how improvements, including the dedicated eastbound and westbound left-turning lanes, new turning signals, a deceleration lane, and an enhanced pedestrian crossing feature with the blinking lights, effectively resolve existing congestion and safely accommodate future development. This simulation reflects the findings of the traffic impact assessment, which has been reviewed by city administration and accepted, and it confirms, with the recommended upgrades, the intersection performs well, and under full buildout conditions. Let's take a look.
All right, thank you. Okay, you can see that. So this is a simulation that reflects the existing conditions with no development. This was developed as part of the traffic impact assessment to understand the background conditions. So this is with the existing geometry and the existing traffic signals. So eastbound coming out of the neighborhood is just a through with a left lane, and there's no left-hand turn signal. So I just, it's a one-hour simulation, I sped it up quite a bit. I don't know how much we want to watch this, but I'll just fast-forward it a little bit to show some of the key issues is, and I witnessed it myself, I've been out there during the peak hour, it's quite congested backing up. Quite a ways. Yeah, we can, it's, yeah, if people are laughing because they've seen it, I've seen it, I have photos of it. I think that, I understand the concerns with this, because it's an existing issue. So as part of developing the traffic impact assessment, we looked at the existing conditions and developed a solution for that. And then the second video I'll share shows the traffic conditions with the development traffic added, plus the improvements that are all tied to the zoning and to be completed before zoning. So it's zoomed out a bit more to show the accesses, but it's, just to get a sense of where the queuing was in the existing conditions, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but simulating it, it goes past and in front of the park, and with the improved conditions, it won't go past this access, it actually is quite spaced from this access. So you can see there is still some queuing, but it's letting out, because that eastbound left-hand turn is there, and they get a left-hand turn signal. So I apologize if you can't see the details on the video, but eastbound and westbound have a left-hand turn signal in this simulation, and it resolves a lot of the existing issues. It also provides improved sightlines, so when people are leaving the community, they have a difficulty seeing across the intersection to see if someone's coming behind a queued vehicle. So this, along with the other improvements that are mentioned, including the flashing crosswalk lights to be installed with the development, that will improve safety quite a lot for this area. And that's all I have to say about the simulation, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. I'll open it up to council for questions, recognizing Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I wish the slide was still back up, but there's two parts of the municipal reserve that you're looking at. One for the road, and then there's the triangle in front of the fountains. And I know that that's really what a lot of people are passionate about, is they don't want to ruin the aesthetics of the fountain. So what are you, what's the use of that triangle in front of the fountain? By your illustration, it looked like you're going to have a right-in access.
Just give us one second. Ms. Downing's going to put her screen up. There we go.
Yeah, so that triangle in front. I think, again, that may compromise the sightlines, and that probably is a big concern for a lot of people, so I'm just kind of curious what the use of that, or why they asked for that specific part is. So there you go, a right-in.
So did you answer your own question?
Oh, she answered the question by showing me the slide.
There you go. Perfect. All right. Anything further, Counselor Berg?
No, that's fine.
Counselor O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. My question to you is, on the development, there's a gas bar, there's a bank, there's a car wash, and I didn't see a lot of traffic coming out the right-in and right-out. So how much traffic do you anticipate that will be using this at full buildout? Because that doesn't take into consideration the large three-story, four-story building that's there, and the other two commercial buildings at the very west end of the property. And I'm concerned that, you know, there's got to be a lot of traffic coming in there and coming out. So I didn't see that in your modeling.
Sure. Thank you for the question through the mayor. I don't have the exact value in front of me, but the number of trips accounted for all the entire site area that's shown on the zoning application, so the office use. If I had the TIA in front of me, I would have it, but there is a clause in the zoning that no development can generate more traffic than what was estimated in the traffic impact assessment. And there is a, maybe that your planner could explain, but there is a point in the process where that estimate will be checked while development's occurring, to verify that no more traffic gets generated than what was assessed in the TIA. So there is no expectation that more traffic would be generated than the intersection has capacity for.
And the site plan that you saw was just an example of what the site could look like. As of right now, there is no plans in place for, even for it to look like that. It's really going to be developer-driven.
That concerns me, because we don't know what we're going to get. Here's, here's the plan that you proposed, and to me, this idea, concept, is if that's not what's going to happen, then what is going to happen there? And the neighbors, I read all the letters from the neighborhood, and they're concerned about safety and access, so I'm concerned.
Go ahead.
Well, the traffic impact assessment assessed 13 different land use scenarios, with a variety of uses, including different numbers of fueling positions, different sizes of, I say fueling positions, because that's the trip generator for a gas station, different sizes of fast food, or other uses on the site, including office, and that was the basis for determining the impacts to the maximum amount of traffic that could be accommodated. So the TIA accounted for different types of land uses, because with development, there needs to be some flexibility for the, I believe, I'm not developer myself, but I work with lots, and they need some flexibility after they get zoning, so that it becomes something that they can actually work with.
Okay, thank you. I'll get back into queue later.
Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thanks for the presentation. Quick question, I was watching the modeling of the TIA, or maybe that's just your own, but one thing I didn't notice is that in the all-directional access, there was no cars turning left in there. Now, within that left-turn lane, I was expecting during the simulation that you'd see some queuing, a bit of stopping at that left turn while it waited for other cars to go by, but I didn't see one of the vehicles actually turn left in there and create another stop gap before that light. Like, everything seemed to flow smoothly. But my concern on that access is the people that are turning left in and left out, you know, to get on the road, and maybe sometimes rushing it, you don't see a kid, you know, you plow through, and then kids just go into the park. So that is a bit of concern, because I can see a lot of the traffic getting queued up at that left-turn lane there, as everyone starts turning in, and I just didn't see that. Am I mistaken, or is that, is there a left-turning?
Yeah, no, there's certainly left-turning traffic applied to all the accesses. There's a right-in, right-out off of 108th Street, there's also an all-directional of Pinnacle, so that it does distribute traffic, and a majority of traffic coming to the site is not coming from Pinnacle. Turning left in, a lot of it is, because it's commercial, coming from 108th Street, so using the right-in, right-out, and then turning left out of the access, so.
But would we know that, though? Because Pinnacle Road's a pretty long road, stretches right through the neighborhood, and has access all the way up to 116th. So you could have people coming in from West Point, you could have people coming in from Kensington, once that gets built out, and going to use these facilities over here, just driving through the residential neighborhood, and then you might see a bit more traffic volume come from the Pinnacle Drive.
Certainly. I understand the concern. We did work with city administration in, and developing where the origin points would be, or the destination points would be for this site, and this was approved by them, because they understand their traffic patterns, actually, in a lot of ways, sometimes better than consultants doing the work. So we do work with them and develop those assumptions. But yeah, definitely in the TIA, it's, there's a lot less traffic coming from the west than there is coming from 108th Street.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm curious if there's been any conversations or any thought yet about what happens if this happens to the land even further west? And to speak about that, it's, I get what you're saying about this is a more desirable thing to have near residential. I would point out it's industrial business, not general industrial, and industrial business is made to minimize impact on adjacent areas, so it isn't at, IB isn't as high-impact as general industrial. Still, I get what you're saying, that commercial's better, but it's also, commercial, we're not getting any of those benefits under this current zoning from the land that's actually closest to houses. A lot of those benefits really are removed from residential property, so I'm trying to figure out if this happens. Well, the neighborhood's given up a lot in terms of feel, but do the houses that are further west, are they actually going to benefit from that? So has there been any conversation or any thought yet on what happens to that land further west of this, if this is allowed?
We would see it in three phases. The first phase, obviously, what you see before you today, and then similar for a second phase and third phase. The lot is very long, so it's, you can cut it up into thirds pretty nice, and so that's how it would be phased, but it would be all similar type uses that are in the, anything that's in the direct control district would be, I guess, available to the developer to develop.
And is this all owned by the same developer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just, I'm really drawn to that triangle. So within, again, it's all about the aesthetics and how the fountain looks, and I know, again, the neighborhood takes pride in that. Is that critical to your development? Because it is, it looks like it's single right-in, one lane in. I could see the argument maybe behind the fountain, but is that's right-in in front of the fountain, is that critical to your development?
I just want it noted that the access points don't affect the pond. So the pond would remain how it looks today. This development doesn't affect the pond at all. It would just be that there's traffic now turning in front of it, then just going by it. So I'm not...
And that's my point.
I'll defer to the traffic engineer on why that right-in is there, but...
Sure.
Yeah.
That was, to be honest, that was a proposal from the land developer, and that was a request for us to assess it. In terms of critical need, I can't speak to whether that makes it a developable parcel or not, with or without that.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
I'm going to sound like a broken record here. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am still concerned with the density. What is the density of this whole development? What is the population there? There is a large apartment building that's being built just down the road up north of there.
Yep.
That will increase, that will increase the density and the amount of traffic, and that's why I was asking. How much traffic will be generated from the site itself? I understand a convenience store and a gas bar would probably be very welcome, but I'm concerned about the safety of the residents, and the ability, changing the looks of what they have developed here and what they've lived with, and that concerns me. So will this density that's happening from the west going to affect what the traffic is, and your modeling?
I can speak to that. So when we started the traffic analysis process, we worked with city administration, and we received the areas that were undeveloped, and accounted for the traffic coming out of those areas, so they're part of the area structure plan, I believe. There's, I'm just looking at the appendix of the traffic impact assessment, there shows, I don't know the exact land uses, but I believe there was some multifamily, perhaps you can speak to that, but there's multifamily, so all that isn't developed in the Pinnacle area, it was included in the traffic impact assessment. I guess I could speak to the number of accesses in and out for the whole community. There are other areas for them to go, for example, like 77, like to the west, I don't want to get into specifics, but some of that development is further west than it is close to here, so. specifics, but some of that development is further west than it is close to here, so.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. So today, we're here to either approve or not approve from industrial to commercial. Now, the submission of these buildings that are placed on this one slide, I think page five, this is all theoretical, or is there anybody's commitment, or any roads design or anything at this point?
It's all theoretical at this point. There's no plans to develop this right away. It will be market-driven, so it could stay in open field for five years, 10 years, or it could be developed starting next month, or whenever the approvals are in place. It's really market-driven, but this piece of land has been owned by this developer for 17 years. And it's not fair to say that nothing can be developed on it. He's paying taxes on it. And, you know, the landowners may have gotten used to backing onto this field, but it is a prime piece of property that can be developed and can be useful for the residents that live around there.
So it sounds like you've got a few people in here that are concerned. Can you give me an example of what could be built here if the bylaw changed?
I don't know if Allison can put the direct control district up on the screen. I don't know it off my heart. But we made sure that when we chose the land, or chose the uses in this district, that they were, they remained hourly-friendly. So things that aren't going to run 24/7, like a community school, a gas bar even, which I mean, could be 24/7, but I mean, based on the development permit, that's when restrictions would be put on, things like that. You know, a vehicle wash, healthcare center, that's usually pretty nine to five, Monday to Friday. So you can see them all listed there. And because it is direct control, it would have to come to council for approval.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your answers. I appreciate that.
And then I'll go to Counselor Plod, who's online. I'm still struggling with your traffic modeling. On your video, at the all-direction intersection, I watched it specifically and didn't see cars turning left. And so there's not a left-hand turning lane. There's only one lane till to the east side of that all-direction intersection. One car turning left there is going to stop the whole thing. So I don't understand. Walk me through that.
Sure. There's no left-turn lane turning into the access? Correct. There's not a lot of traffic turning into the access?
It's only left and right out of it. Nothing, no, if you're driving east, there's no left-hand into it.
It's an all-directional access?
Yeah.
So people can, you know, customers can turn left off of Pinnacle?
Yeah.
Go into the site?
But your modeling didn't show one car turning left there?
Right, because my modeling's just a small snippet, so I'd have to share it and play it all the way through. There's not a lot of traffic.
So in the morning, somebody decides to go to this new gas station, they're turning left, and they stop everybody else trying to get out of Pinnacle?
That's correct, but that's if... The delays for that were tested. And so if a vehicle's on coming from 108 Street, for sure, they have to stop and yield right away. But if there's no one there, and most people are leaving the community rather than coming in in the morning, there's no reason to stop. So they would just turn left.
Okay.
And otherwise, they would just proceed, so.
Okay. Thanks. Counselor Plod.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. My apologies if I'm asking something. I'm in an airport, and I maybe missed some of the information there. But my concern was with the modeling. When I seen the display, I've been driving by this intersection a lot. So is the crosswalk changing the current location where it is now?
The crosswalk across Pinnacle, or the crosswalk underneath?
From the, in Pinnacle, it would go from across to the current, to the park that's there. There's a crosswalk right in that area. Is that crosswalk staying in the same location as it currently is?
The TIA states two options, and they would be addressed later on in subdivision or development permit phase. So the first option is that the trail stays where it is today, but we add flashers to signalize pedestrians. And the second option would be to move the pedestrian crosswalk back further from the intersection. And so that's also looked at in the TIA as well. So there's two options that could be addressed at time of subdivision or development permit, but later on in the process.
Okay. And I guess just to follow up, just to go with Mayor Clayton's comment that I just heard there. I've been driving by this development since we've been hearing about this anywhere from 6:30 in the morning till 8:30, trying to drive by in 50-minute increments. And there's lots of times there's cars backed up all the way to that crosswalk. So I'm still really struggling. I'm hearing other questions here, struggling with how we can guarantee to this community that it's going to be safe. Because I just, I see a bottleneck at this intersection now without the commercial, so I'm very concerned about that. I guess my other concern, and then maybe you can answer this for me, I want to look at the overall outline plan. There seems to be an access road that goes along the north property from east to west that would go to 110th Street eventually. So any car, anybody that's leasing in this entire space would have the ability to come out with this Pinnacle entrance?
Yes, that's correct. But the TIA is accommodates for the whole buildout of the whole, of the whole property, the whole parcel, not just the front part.
Appreciate the TIA, and I know you're saying it's a rushed video for an hour, but I'd have to see a video simulation showing me how when there's 15 cars trying to turn left and right at 7:45 in the morning, that this isn't going to be a bigger problem. Your simulator seemed to show a lot of cars coming in and out. I didn't see a lot coming out from Pinnacle. And if you look at Pinnacle, anytime between 7:40, especially when school starts again here, 7:45 in the morning till 8:15, it's already backed up past that crosswalk almost daily that I drive by there now. So I just, I can't see your simulator working. Sorry. I see the model really quick there. I just don't see how that's going to evade the traffic, because it feels like your simulation's pretty light on the current traffic that's there today without the development property.
Through the mayor. So right now, it's backed up and an issue. With these property improvements, with the green left-turning signal, it will improve things for this intersection. Doing nothing is not going to help these Pinnacle residents either.
No, I appreciate that. There's already a bottleneck there, though, and you're going to try to add a right-in, right-out. That traffic will go where traffic will go. So we have no ability to say if the 70,000 a square feet that's on your model gets leased out, we have no control of if every single one of them chooses to use the Pinnacle entrance to get in and out. That's going to be the consumer's choice. And so today, we're modeling on that. We actually don't know how much modeling is going to come out of that area. And they could come out to 108th Street, right-in, right-out. They could use 110th Street. But we have no guarantee of that. And I guess a huge concern for me is that this development continues to fill out, we're going to see severe bottlenecking right at that Pinnacle fountain. Just huge concern for me. So those are my questions, Mayor Clayton. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. I'm curious about the land disposal. So it definitely is a concern about the park losing a lot of space and being a lot worse feel. And I hear that the fountain's still going to be there. It sure won't feel like it's part of the park anymore. And it's, I understand why the valuation's $4,500, but I get that that's what it would be assessed at, et cetera. But it's probably worth a lot more than that to the residents of Pinnacle who use it. Was there any conversation or any consideration of, hey, instead of disposing of the municipal reserve, doing a land swap so the park can be expanded, and so we're not losing green space in the neighborhood?
There were not discussions of a land swap. There were only discussions of closing the MR and creating access points. But I'm sure we'd be open to something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just a quick question. Slap, how essential is the MR to this development? Because it seems like where I see the issues, seems like other people are seeing the same issues with that access point onto the Collector Road that's Pinnacle Drive, and its placement close to a major road in the intersection. So does this development go through, let's see, if the city keeps the MR and doesn't give you the road accesses to Pinnacle Drive?
No, it does not. The access to Pinnacle Drive and how we show it on the screen and all the work that's been put in, you know, I understand that people in the area know what the wait time's like. And I used to live in Pinnacle. I understand that as well. But we also have to trust that, you know, with me today is Dan Zelliger, and he's a professional transportation engineer. He is certified in road safety professional. And he signed off saying that this is only going to improve Pinnacle Drive. And, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I do trust documents that they sign off on. And yeah, to have commercial in there, I think it's necessary, it's a requirement to have access to 108th Street and Pinnacle Drive. If not, that lot will probably be used for, we'll just say, more intensive commercial or low, maybe lower-intensity industrial. But still, you know, we're looking for a happy medium here, too. We want to be able to develop this property. And realistically, it can't stay filled forever. So it's either our developer proposing this, trying to get a happy medium situation, or he sells it to a different developer, and it's not going to be so, it may not be so pretty.
To the, I think, just on the congestion in the morning, I've seen it. It make, like, there is congestion there today. And I think what's getting maybe missed is that it's a through, it's a through lane and a left-turn lane together. The improvement plan is to create a separate left-hand turn and then put up a left-hand turn signal. And that, like, that clears things up a lot. Like, if that happened today, if this development didn't happen at all, that would fix, like, that would fix a lot of the, a lot of congestion concerns. So I think when we're thinking about putting a development there, we're perceiving it based on its existing conditions. But that's all part of the study that I did to show that, okay, there's a solution here. And with this solution, it really, really clears things up quite a lot and would actually make the neighborhood a lot easier to get out of in the morning.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Sorry, I just want to clarify something you said there. You, when you say there's a through lane and a left-hand turn lane, but it's not till after the all-direction intersection?
It's at 108 Street. Correct. Yeah.
Right. So, but that's not what's being addressed here. Like, the bottleneck concern is prior, is before the all-access intersection that is being...
So the congestion that I've seen, it goes, like, getting out of the neighborhood, it backs up, like, cars are, yeah, backed up all the way.
Currently, with additional tenants in the area, let's say.
That's right. Yeah.
Was there any consideration for, or conversations with the city in regards to accessing some of the land to the south of Pinnacle Drive, to lengthening that left-hand turn lane? So if the left-hand turn lane went prior to the all-access intersection, so that those who are going through could continue to go through, and those who queuing to turn left wouldn't be blocking the traffic that's trying to get to 108?
Sure. If I understand, extending the left-hand turn past the access?
Right.
That could be an option if necessary, post, like, could be today, just, I think...
I mean, who owns the land that's south of that Pinnacle Drive, right? So if you were to widen that road so that you had a left-hand intersection prior to the all-access intersection, you wouldn't be bottlenecking the people trying to get through to 108? Do you know what I mean?
I almost need to draw a picture. Sorry.
Ms. Downey, can you put your staff report up and, for me, about page two of the staff report?
No disrespect, just visual. Yeah.
There's a lot, for sure. Page seven there would show the municipal reserve designation file there had it, too. I don't even know if the city is interested in selling the land. But to me, the traffic is a huge concern, right? So if you were to look, see where the pedestrian trail is?
Right. Yeah.
And the all-access intersection there is just past it? If you were to lengthen that left-hand turning lane so that it aligned with the all-access intersection, therefore cars queuing to turn left wouldn't be stopping the cars that are trying to get through to 108? The only way you could do that would acquire land from the city, which is south of Pinnacle Drive?
So, yeah, okay, I see. Adding a left-hand turn into the, into the development. Okay. If I measured it, it might fit in there, just with no parking allowed. Do you need a certain...
No, there's other land there.
Yeah. Yeah. It might fit within the existing carriageway, I guess, within the existing roadway.
Okay.
Yeah. But that wasn't, that wasn't, like, that wasn't reviewed because there wasn't really many, much delay getting into the site.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Kind of an overarching question that a number of people had asked me. The name of Wonder Valley Campus Development, is this in any relation or connected to the Wonder Valley Project, the data center south of Grand Prairie?
No, it is not.
Okay. Yep. That, I just wanted that public because people have been asking. Thank you.
For sure.
I'm just going to check with Counselor Plod. He still has his hand up, but it may be from previously.
No, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just had another follow-up question. I'm just wondering, I guess for me, where I keep going back that I'm struggling with is the all-directional access, I guess, west of the fountain. So when the land was originally purchased and was originally developed, I believe it came with an all-directional access, a right-in, right-out of 108th Street and 110th Street. Was that the only access that was originally granted to this land? I think Mayor, or Counselor Berg asked, but my phone cut out when he asked. My apologies.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And so I guess for the proponent, when they bought the land, they knew this was a risk. And I'm certainly not one to stagnate land. I definitely don't want to see this land sit there. Would a right, when they have the right into their off of Pinnacle, would that not be enough? The all-directional access is just a real big struggle for me. So I appreciate we're trying to get a development in there. Would just the right-in off of the Pinnacle access not be enough to have a right in there, you've got a left on 108? Like, oh, I hear you're saying it's kind of pivotal for commercial, but for an industrial style of property, for what was originally done, is there not enough access with what was originally granted for industrial-style properties? Sorry, did I leave you?
No, they're thinking.
Okay.
We don't have that answer for you today. We did the TIA based off of all the access points that are proposed today.
Okay. And I guess to Mayor Clayton's point earlier, if there was an option to come off the left off 108, or just that one right-in, right-in, not a left-out of Pinnacle, do you feel that would still be enough to get a commercial project in there? You're still going to have access from three different locations to get into the site?
Yes, at this point, you know, with all the history given to the property and such, any type of access from 108th Street or Pinnacle Drive would be accepted. And the, you know, the development of these access points are part of subdivision approval. So I mean, if we don't improve the intersection to city standards, they can't register the subdivision, and the development can't go through.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks, Counselor Plod. All right. I don't see anyone else in the queue. I'll just double-check with my colleagues. Seeing none, thank you for being here. I will ask a second time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this land use by law amendment. C-1260-199. Come on up, sir. Oh, you, first. Are you together?
No.
Okay. Please go ahead. Once you're situated, please introduce yourself. That microphone isn't attached. You can pull it forward. And just, and those who might be watching at home, just let us know who you are. Thanks.
My name is Alana Morgan. I've lived in Pinnacle for 19 years. We love the area. You know, currently, we've lived with it being a very vacant piece of property that's full of weeds, overgrown grass, debris, and vagrants. And I can't help to think that that increased vagrants in the area is, you know, due to that property being easy accessible to them, easy place to hide, overgrown bushes, overgrown grass. And there's an increased crime in our area. I think that having that commercial... I think that having that commercial develop, the development of that property is going to be key to the safety of the subdivision. I think as long as there's still a fence that's bordering the park and that keeps the kids safe, yes, the pond is nice when you drive in, but again, it's often wrought with weeds and overgrown property that's not maintained by the city or where we're supposed to maintain it now. They talked about maybe losing some of the green space, and I can understand where that comes from, but again, the green space that we have, although it's quite nice, it is, again, overgrown with weeds and rarely maintained by the city and kept nice and trim and neat and easy to enjoy, because it's full of, you know, weeds and overgrown grass and such. So I think that, again, I've lived there for 19 years and we love the division. I, I can understand the traffic being backed up, however, there is an issue with that intersection now, regardless if the subdivision goes ahead. So there is clearly an issue with that, the traffic in that area, trying to get out, and it only being no left-turn arrow and the left-turn lane being the same as the street through. So my kids, for example, went to Derek Taylor, I would often go to the right and go to the right-hand turn lane and scoot around to try and bypass the people turning left and having to wait for pedestrians or what have you. So regardless if it gets developed, there's an issue with traffic in that area to begin with, and I think that what's being proposed, including the extension of that left-turning lane to where that all-access is into that property, I think is key to solving the traffic problem that Pinnacle has, regardless if this subdivision goes through or not. My concern is if this doesn't get sold and developed, number one, it remains a deserted property that nobody maintains, nobody cleans, and nobody checks for vagrants and homeless people, and the traffic problem will just continue to be the traffic problem. Again, I've been there for 19 years and it has always been a problem. Yes, there's a new apartment building that's being built, but that's going to increase traffic in the area and it's out of all of our control. We can't control that it's approved, it's happening, right? That intersection needs to be improved in order for the traffic to flow nicely. I don't think there is an ounce of issue or risk to children at the park, as long as it's fenced and as long as the pathway I would think is moved a little further south and it keeps the kids or pedestrians crossing further south of the entrance to the division, I can't see any possible increased risk to the children. The children there are used to it being fenced, and I just can't envision, when my kids were younger, that that would have caused me any concern with them enjoying the park now or enjoying it the way it's going to be if they do this development. I think that the benefits are immense, I'd like to have things closed at access to us in Pinnacle, and I do think it's a fabulous idea, so I'm absolutely for it.
Thank you. I'll see if any council colleagues have questions for you. Recognizing Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you. I really appreciate you coming in and speaking about this, and dealing with the whole intersection, I think, is a key point, and I really think, I've been through the area a number of times and trying to get across is like three lights, for sure. So I think there needs to be, and perhaps we need to ask them to come back with a little bit more improvement on in-out and some of the modeling, I'd be willing to listen to that. And what's the plan going forward to deal with the amount of traffic that's coming out and heading south?
Even with the modeling that they provided now, without extending that left-turn lane past the all-access, I can't imagine there being too much traffic coming from within Pinnacle into that development and then backing up the people that want to go straight through. I just can't see that being a big issue. When you're looking in the morning and the rush hour areas where things bottleneck there, in the morning, for example, everyone's trying to get out of Pinnacle, so I can't picture in my mind someone turning in off 108th into Pinnacle and wanting to turn into that subdivision, and there being so many people wanting to turn right that somebody can't quickly turn left and that it would bottleneck there. Even with the way it's proposed, I just can't envision that in my mind. Again, I've been there for 19 years, use it multiple times a day, I can't picture that many people wanting to turn in in the mornings or at 5 o'clock, that it would bottleneck it at that all-access spot.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. Can you repeat your name again, sir?
Alana Morgan.
Thank you.
Hello, James Buchanan. I've lived in Pinnacle for over 10 years now. I'm kind of on the fence about it. I like the idea of not having an industrial area right next to our nice walking path up through the back, through there. I like the idea of having a left-turning lane to keep traffic flowing. I also like your idea of having just entrance into that area coming in through Pinnacle. My biggest concern, though, what keeps me on the fence is the safety of children. There's a lot of things that the City of Edmonton does that I don't agree with. But one thing, when I go to the City of Edmonton that I see that I enjoy, is residential areas are 40 kilometers an hour, and that's a big thing that I'd love to see a concern like this bring to the future of not just Pinnacle, Cobblestone, O'Brien, everywhere across. I would love to see this bring that concern of, let's bring the speed down in all residential areas. That's it.
Thanks for being here. I don't see anybody in the queue with questions for either of you, so thank you both for being here. I'll ask another time if there's anyone else here to speak in support of land use-by-law amendment C-1260-199. Welcome. Once you're situated, please introduce yourself.
Okay. Let's pull up my notes. Hello, my name is Travis Harder. Yeah, I'm, I also agree that this would be a great addition to the area, having new businesses and stuff like that. I do have an issue with the access, and as well, one of the proposed businesses is also a drinking establishment, minors, I don't want that to be part of that area. I feel like having a drinking establishment is going to add late-night noise and additional, possibly, drinking and driving and other drinking-related issues, so that's one thing I have an issue with. I think if it was on Pinnacle Drive, we have a right-in and a right-out only, you could additionally extend the boulevard, or the median, sorry, in the middle of the road to force that, so there's no left-hand turns from Pinnacle into that area, would additionally help that, and then add a four-way stop at Pinnacle Drive and Pinnacle Way. Right now, Pinnacle, turning off of Pinnacle Way onto Pinnacle Drive as it is right now, there's huge blind spots and it's, like, does cause serious issues. I almost get hit, like, not every day, but quite often, I pull out, people have their cars parked right on that corner, and to pull out onto that street where people are, again, like that other gentleman said, doing like 50 or at least 60 kilometers an hour, it's very difficult to turn left with just yields there. So a four-way stop at that intersection would slow down traffic a bit, and having a right-in and right-out only along Pinnacle Drive would also, there is, people could turn down towards O'Brien and then back onto 108th if they needed to. That's all my concerns, thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. I don't see anybody online or in the queue with questions for you, but just thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
I'll ask another time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this land use-by-law amendment, and I'll ask a third and final time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this land use-by-law amendment. Seeing no one, I'll see if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this land use-by-law amendment. I'll get to all of you, so, because there's many of you, if I can ask you to be, you know, five minutes would be great. Thank you, and introduce yourself.
Correct. I'm Camille, I represent part of our Neighborhood Association for Pinnacle Ridge. We are writing this on behalf...
Have your last name.
Oh, Rockstad Watson. We are writing this on behalf of the Pinnacle Ridge Neighborhood Association. We would like to express our strong opposition to the proposed rezoning of land in our neighborhood from the RS Small Lot Residential to DC 39 Direct Control, so basically just the access. As residents of Pinnacle Ridge, we are deeply concerned about the development proposal and how this will change, will negatively impact the safety, functionality, and character of our community. For traffic and safety concerns, the area of the proposed access already faces significant traffic challenges, as we've already heard. With the amount of traveling in and out of Pinnacle Ridge on Pinnacle Drive, the area has several times throughout the day where it is congested and there are timely wait periods. At the intersection of Pinnacle Drive and Pinnacle Way, left turns are consistently difficult and dangerous as there are vehicles parked on the side blocking the view of traveling, of view of traffic traveling east and west. Introducing another left turn at the proposed access point from the proposed development on Pinnacle Drive, especially so close to an already existing congestion caused by 108th Highway 40 intersection, will increase delays and risk of collisions and safety of children. Additionally, the presence of vehicles regularly parked along the road for park access narrows visibility and limits safe passage. On Samuel Street, there is not only a city transit stop above, further of the crosswalk, there are also community mailboxes and a school bus stop before even arriving to Pinnacle Way. The new development would significantly increase both vehicle and pedestrian traffic in an already burdened area. In 2021, the approximate population of Pinnacle Ridge and West Point went from 6,059 to 6,635 in 2024, a difference of 576 people, which will continue to have a drastic increase with the 166-unit apartment building being built across from Ecole Nouvelle School. Keeping in mind of the added population of traffic that the new apartment building will have, Pinnacle Drive has seen a significant amount of traffic on a daily basis. A recent traffic count was done at the four-way stop at Pinnacle Drive and Pinnacle Boulevard. According to the Traffic Association of Canada, that all municipalities use across North America, the annual average daily count at this four-way stop counted 7,580 vehicles in one day. This is equivalent to over five cars per minute. 4,218 of those vehicles were traveling east and west towards highway intersection lines. In 2018, which is an outdated traffic count, was completed at Pinnacle Way, with a total of 5,627 vehicles. Of those traveling, 4,767 were traveling along Pinnacle Drive. Another outdated traffic count was completed in 2022 at Highway 40, 108th Street Lights. In total, 22,366 vehicles traveled that intersection in one day. 4,291 of those vehicles were accessing Pinnacle Ridge neighborhood. With the added development of proposed access in our neighborhood, the amount of traffic will surely increase in order to get the commercial buildings. Impact on children and recreation. Pinnacle Ridge is home to young families who use Park, the Park, Waterfall, green space throughout the year for recreation, gatherings, and play. Our inviting gazebo allows for family gatherings to take place before families head off to the Waterfall to enjoy pictures and further fun. The proposal to add a new road near this park raises serious concerns for child safety, especially as many children and their families walk, bike, and play in the area. Adding a new road in between the park and the Waterfall, children and their families will have another road to cross in order to enjoy the Waterfall feature. With heavy traffic and high speeds, crossing Pinnacle Drive at the crosswalk can be a danger in itself. Crossing there with my own small children has left me very cautious, as drivers aren't paying attention and not giving the pedestrians a right-of-way with using the lights. I, myself, have seen many illnesses with small children and vehicles as children are crossing the roads while drivers are not stopping despite using the flashing lights. Adding another busy road into the development will double the risk of child safety around dense traffic. Our neighborhood is valued for its mature trees, green spaces, and water features, and thoughtful layout for all to enjoy. Rezoning to accommodate a higher-density development with the main access in our neighborhood undermines the unique charm and identity of our community. The removal of established trees and open areas for infrastructure and densification will diminish the visual appeal and livability of Pinnacle Ridge. In closing, respectfully urging mayor and council members to consider the long-term implications this rezoning will have on traffic flow, child safety, and the overall integrity of our neighborhood. We encourage council to review traffic flow and speed on Pinnacle Drive during peak hours. We ask that you protect the safety of our young children and the qualities that make Pinnacle Ridge a desirable and safe place to live by rejecting the proposed rezoning. On behalf of the Pinnacle Ridge Neighborhood Association, we thank you for your time and consideration.
I will come back to you if you do, I just wanted to check.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Brooking-Bond. I just wanted to add to what Camille was saying, with the playground being as popular as it is, there's many, many people that come from outside of our neighborhood to enjoy it, which results in a lot of street parking right around the park. So the proposed access points that the developer has given to us means the reduction of street parking and access to the playground, or an increase in risk of people getting injured while accessing the playground.
Great, thank you for that. I do have a couple of my colleagues in the queue recognizing Councilor Ressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming in, and thanks for being involved in your neighborhood association. I love our neighborhood association, so thanks for putting that work in. I'm just curious, so your neighborhood association approved that? What was the process? Was that your board approved it, or do you have a special neighborhood association meeting of the wider neighborhood to discuss it?
Of the one I just wrote. We have just a communication application that we use. It's very challenging to get together in the summer. So we drafted a letter, we sent it out, we made additions, admits, and we came up with this.
And was that just the board that was involved in that, or the wider neighborhood was involved in that?
It was the board, the association.
Excellent, well, and again, really appreciate those of you who take the time to speak for your neighborhoods, thank you.
Councilor Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I see there's two questions around this, and so I'll just kind of throw them out to you, as you do represent a lot of people. So the first question is, generally speaking, you would actually prefer a commercial area to an industrial area?
I agree with the past speakers that there does need to be a development, but I really think that there needs to be more thought put into this. A lot of questions went unanswered. I think, you know, I did a simple phoning to someone in the city, I got my numbers gathered together, and I just feel like there just needs to be more thought put into it, as this is a similar draft of what was drafted 78 years ago in the same zone. There wasn't, yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and so the second question is around access, and so the access, from the people that I've talked to, it was mostly around the aesthetics of the Waterfall, but what I'm hearing more and more is traffic. So does one weigh heavier than the other? Do they both weigh in your opposition?
Are you talking foot traffic or...?
Like, the vehicle traffic.
Vehicle traffic. I'm sorry, I feel like...
Oh, that's fine. So vehicle traffic is an issue. When I was talking to people, it seemed to be the fountain was the issue and the Waterfall. So are both actually issues, one weighing heavier than the other? Just for a point of clarity.
Okay, I think there is an issue with people being able to leave Pinnacle and exit onto the highway, especially during peak driving times. That's always been an issue, and regardless of whether it gets developed or not, there does need to be a change in that. I would like to also speak to pedestrian traffic, because there is a lot of people that exit the neighborhood on bikes and on foot, who are at risk of getting injured, adding two additional access points on that sidewalk already. My husband walks to work almost every day, and he has issues crossing the highway safely, let alone people going in and out of that area without paying attention. Camille made a very, a really valid point, when people are crossing Pinnacle Drive with the flashing crosswalk lights... When people are crossing Pinnacle Drive with the flashing crosswalk lights, people really don't pay attention while they're driving, and there's been a lot of near misses. So my concern is, as pedestrians, how do we access that part of Pinnacle Drive safely when you're adding two additional access points to it and people already aren't paying attention? And we've got a playground where people are, or kids, I guess, more so than adults, are going and accessing that water feature.
Okay, I appreciate your input and for coming forward. Thanks.
Just gonna jump in before Councilor Tiesin, just because it's on similar vein to Councilor Berg. I'm a little bit confused on the concern around the water feature. Is it just because of the addition of a potential access? I mean, the trail's still there, the water feature's still there. Is it just increased traffic then it becomes less desirable? Is that really what the concern is?
Well, because if you have an additional access through the park, the kids and the families won't want to cross because Pinnacle Drive is already a nightmare to cross and it's very unsafe as it is. Because that zone is 50 kilometers, having to cross another road, which would be the proposed access to the waterfall. I mean, if you're gonna do that, take away the waterfall and take away our levy that we pay.
If there was another, if the trail went a different route, that solves that, right? Like if the walking trail was closer to the first intersection at Pinnacle... Sorry, what?
At Pinnacle Way, are you talking about?
Yeah.
So at Pinnacle Way, there's a school bus stop.
Yeah.
Community mailboxes and a city transit stop. So that is already a busy area, so switching the crosswalk there, sure, but you're already having a unmarked school bus stop, you already have our community mailboxes, and then you have a transit city bus stop there as well. And then all of the vehicles parked along for park access.
Right. Okay, thank you. Councilor Tiesin?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thank you so much, ladies, for coming in. As Councilor Bress said, you're definitely serving your community well, doing all the extra research. Question for you, so my question is actually about the water feature too, and I have concerns about that. We do levy a tax, which people at Pinnacle have asked for that, and so we levied away and we make sure that at least the fountain is running optimally, hopefully, all the time. Now, my concern is around the two accesses, because what it does is it sort of divides the park out, and then it creates an island just for the fountain. And when I look at it, just looking at the map, it seems like once that happens, then the fountain becomes less of a feature for the neighborhood and more of a feature for the development where people are going to be turning in and out to. I guess my question for you is, as longtime residents and members of the neighborhood association, I think you already stated it, but do you think people would continue to go to the fountain with that extra access there, the all-directional access? And/or do you think that with it being islanded off, that there might be a push, as you just stated earlier in your own chair, hey, stop levying the tax against us and get rid of the fountain, just pull it out? So that would be one less aesthetic for the neighborhood. Do you think that would happen?
I think it won't be as easily accessible, so I think that people will just not bother.
Okay, yeah, that's, thank you.
Having to cross, sorry, having to cross Pinnacle Drive already and then having to cross another, it would definitely deter me and my children.
Yeah, you just go straight to the park and then head home. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I have no one else in the queue with questions for you. Thanks for being here. I'll now ask if there's anyone else here to speak in opposition of Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-199. Once you get situated, please introduce yourself and take five minutes to address council.
Hi there, I'm Janet Schwank. I live right on Pinnacle Drive, so as many of you know, it's a busy road, yeah. We always joke about taking our life into our own hands. When we go out there, I'm having to, my garage door's not working, so I'm having to park on that street right now, and I pray every day that I still have a mirror when I come out. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I just strongly oppose.
You're good.
I just strongly oppose this. I don't mind, I understand, yes, that land has to be developed, however, the first time the land's been mowed in probably, well, the 12 years I've been there, was like this week, knowing this public hearing was coming up. So in all honesty, they really want to push this land development, and I understand, it makes sense, but just having those access points on Pinnacle Drive, adding more congestion, which has already been discussed time and time again. What wasn't in that simulation was, most days in the morning, it's actually backed up to almost the first four-way stop in the mornings, which is well past my house. We don't even go that way to take my kid to school, because like people say, we just don't access that way out. Yes, there needs to be concerns, but I just think adding more congestion to it, and then, like they said, maybe having an extra four-way stop at Pinnacle Way stops flow of traffic even more, having, even if you put a light up or whatever, it's still stopping. And yeah, again, it's just the traffic. Putting that, the waterfall as an island, then yeah, again, I would be like, yeah, rip it out then, because, or maybe the development wants to look after, the new development wants to look after that waterfall. So I just strongly oppose it. As a resident, just for the safety of our children, I, even as when my kid was 11, I wouldn't let him go across the street by himself because I was scared he was gonna get run over. Multiple times, he's almost been hit biking to school. He's in high school, and he almost gets hit on that street. So, and he knows to make eye contact with people, look around. So I just respectfully request that the City of Grand Prairie reject the bylaw and maintain the current zoning, or even not even maintain the zoning, just don't put access on Pinnacle Drive. It'll ruin the aesthetic of our properties and our beautiful park that, like Suzanne said, people come from all around to use. Just tonight, on my way here, it was full of littles enjoying it and having a good time. It's warm out, so I just think that, yeah, other avenues need to be explored to access that property, like 110th Street.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Charlotte Cruzel, and I live in Pinnacle. Apologize for my appearance, I was out camping and we're rushing to get here. A little smelly, too. I am opposed against the new development of that intersection. As for the property to be developed, I feel that is its time. It has been an eyesore, the front section that is flanking 108th. There's always dumping that's going on in there, and then the trickle down from that property coming onto the street. So that part is an eyesore. My concern is that entranceway coming in is an S-turn with a blind corner, so when people are coming into Pinnacle, they are blinded to anything that is on their left. When the pedestrian lights did go in, that was a very large improvement, as I did, I had a dog and we walked three times a day, and rarely was anyone ever stopping to cross that pathway. So the light did help, but again, it doesn't always work. People tend to ignore it, especially when the park is in full swing and both sides of that street are full of cars and full of kids. The congestion that comes in from there, people aren't just accessing Pinnacle, they are going over into West Point, they're taking the Pinnacle Way. So leaving, 10 times worse. The backup that does occur at the light, not only are you dictated by the light, the Canfor Road dictates that light. And there have been times that I've sat there to make a left turn, waiting for three lights worth of time. I've seen pedestrians take their lives into their hands trying to make across that street with people ignoring them, trying to get their left turn in and splitting pedestrians. I don't see why there is no reason for them not to kick out their entrance and their exit out across from Western Star. To me, that easement is there. They can access 87th Street, and there's a lit intersection right across where South 40 comes out as well. Another issue that I see, I don't know if any of you have driven into South 40, it's an abomination. Actually, this year was the first year I've ever seen them put any maintenance into that road. So does all that additional traffic coming into Pinnacle and going out of Pinnacle, who's maintaining that road? Is that gonna fall on the developers? Is it just gonna get ignored and then we're just gonna have craters to drive over and in and out of? It's a concern, but my biggest concern is the traffic when you first come in, that S-turn. It's very pretty, but it's very dangerous, and an increase of traffic is just going to amplify that to a point when, what if someone does get hurt? What's the cost of someone's life or their quality of life?
I'd also like to add that the traffic studies, one was done in July, and one was done end of June when school was actually out. So our traffic increases tenfold during the school year, for sure. And it's both east and west, it's not just one direction. So turning left onto Pinnacle Drive, doesn't matter whether you're coming north or south, is a challenge, doesn't matter where you are. So, yeah.
Thank you, ladies, for being here. I'll ask if there's anyone else here to speak in opposition. Come on forward. Think you know the routine by now, but once you're situated, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Anna Romph. I don't have many fa...
Pull the mic a bit closer to you. The whole thing is...
Sorry, my apologies.
That's okay.
My name is Anna Romph. I don't have many facts to go over here, but what I do have is a unique perspective. Within the last decade, I was one of those kids who went to the park and was always afraid to cross that crosswalk. Even with the lights that are there now, drivers ignore them. They don't look. Sometimes you have kids and parents who are parked on the side of the road there to access the park, and people fly by so fast, you see parents grabbing for their children, worrying for their safety. Also, hearing that the road they wanted to put there, they did not account for a new fence to block the children off from this new road is really concerning. It just shows not enough forethought for the project, for the full safety of the community. And, well, the road is also absurdly busy. Anyone who drives through there regularly could tell you that. We need some help there, but I don't think this is a way.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name's Daryl Brown, I'm a resident of Pinnacle. And I guess, like, hearing some other thoughts from the other people that have presented tonight, either for or against it, it really made me rethink the way I was looking at this. And my biggest thing is, I live on Pinnacle Way, and right now, that is essentially, and I'm sorry I don't have numbers, these are just anecdotal observations, but come and sit on my doorstep and you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. It is basically a shortcut from Pinnacle to West Point, which is great, like, I mean, I get it, like, that's a normal flow of traffic. And the other thing that one of the other presenters brought to my attention was, I completely forgot about that apartment building that's being built there. So that's also gonna add to that traffic flow. I'm really for the land to be developed. I'm really against the way, what we saw tonight in terms of the access and the traffic flow to try and get out of there, because there was another gentleman that presented earlier. And on that intersection that is Pinnacle Way and Pinnacle Drive, if there's a car parked facing, I realize that, I wish I could put my picture up on the thing here, but...
You can. You put it on that X.
Okay.
Right there.
Please excuse my poor artistic design.
Yeah, that's okay. Just turn it...
Oh, the other way, yeah, okay.
Nope, keep going, keep going, keep going. There we go.
Okay, so...
Or one more turn, sorry, Daryl.
That's okay. This is Pinnacle Way.
Yep.
So it runs, what, east and west, I guess you could say? Is that a safe assumption?
No, it's not.
Okay, I got my directions all backwards, I'm sorry. If you're familiar with Pinnacle Way, right, it's the first right-hand turn when you're coming into Pinnacle Ridge, right? That intersection, the house that's on the corner here and all the residents that fall in line on Pinnacle Drive, if there's a truck parked right there on that corner, you literally are in the lane of oncoming traffic if you're making a left-hand turn off of Pinnacle Way onto Pinnacle Drive. So essentially, you're putting yourself, and it's just the way it's designed, I'm not asking for that to be fixed, it's just a fact of the matter. So if you put all that traffic that's gonna start coming in there, because there's gonna be people coming through Pinnacle Way to try and access whatever retail, whatever office space, whatever's gonna be put into this development, that's just gonna add to it. And that's not a controlled intersection, and you can't, I mean, I don't know, I'm not a traffic expert, but you can't put another set of lights there. That's not gonna do anything for anybody, right? And I mean, I'm sorry, I've only been a resident of Pinnacle Ridge for about five years. I take a lot of pride when I turn that right-hand turn, and I come in there and I see that piece, like, I see Pinnacle Ridge on my left, and I see that fountain on my right. And I bet you if you were to stand there in the morning and talk to the people that run and jog on that pathway, you're gonna disrupt that pathway and that whole flow. And I think that is probably one of the biggest attractions of Pinnacle Ridge, is that you can get on one of those paths and you can go for a rip around the whole neighborhood. And I think that's awesome, personally, but you're gonna disrupt that flow if you put all that traffic in there. And I take a lot of pride when I turn that right-hand corner and I see that park, because it's really nice, people pick their kids up from daycare, they come home and they park on that park, and they let their kids rip it up for a half an hour before they go home. I know, that's what I do, right? So, but I also want to point out, too, that that development that is proposed there, I think it's a great idea, right? I mean, it's fact, it's, our community's growing, everybody wins, the developer wins, the municipality wins. You know, is my property value gonna drop? Well, probably, but go live in Vancouver and see how dense that is, right? You'd be lucky if you got a tree in your backyard. So, I don't know, like, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just saying what I feel. I think, I implore council to reconsider them letting, have them have that access where that water fountain is, to not let them do that. I'm against that access. I'm not against the development, I'm against that access. And quite frankly, I don't know if it was on there, was there another access point potentially on, I don't know what the...
Ms. Downing, could you put your map?
I saw a red arrow, but it was, I didn't catch it right away, like, I don't...
There you go. Mr. Brown?
Not that one.
No. I think it came in from the top of the picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so was that another proposed way in there? Like, they would obviously come in, that top arrow...
It's already intended to be a road.
I know that's a road, but as far as that other property piece, then they would build an access in east?
Internal access?
Is that what they, is that what...
It's on one of the drawings.
Right, so, I don't know, I'm kind of the believer, if you build it, they'll come, people will find their way in there. Is it gonna make it more accessible if you have access from Pinnacle Drive? I think statistics show from the presenters before that it will, but I'm just saying, if the developer's sitting here right now, just understand, man, that's a real wicked, I don't know, how do I say this? I take a lot of pride in my community when I turn that corner, and if that changes, I'm not saying that it's gonna destroy the community, but, I don't know, man, that's a pretty cool place to hang out. You guys should try it sometime, just saying. Also, why don't we open source a game of Sims and maybe we can all come up with a game of, idea how we can help this developer develop it? I'm just saying, man.
I just had a question for you, Ms. Downing, could you put your original map with the proposed accesses up, please? From my understanding, for most of the individuals who were presented tonight, the biggest concern is the all-directional access.
Mm-hmm. So meaning, I want to understand...
So my question is...
I'm sorry.
My question is, I know Mr. Brown, so I'm allowed to... The first right-in, is that a concern on Pinnacle, not the one on 108?
So if I'm looking, like, when you turn the corner there...
Yeah.
And you see that first right-hand turn, the one that's got the open fence part right now?
Yeah.
Is that my concern?
Yeah.
It's both of them.
Okay, all right.
It's both of them. Because even if you had, maybe I misunderstood the way it was presented and... Because even if you had, maybe I misunderstood the way it was presented in terms of the model, but was there an intention of, and I think you kind of alluded to it, Mayor Clayton was to make it wider going south so that you could have a left-hand turning lane to get onto 108th?
Mm-hmm.
So my only concern with that would be, if you have ever traveled north on 108th to the 84th intersection-
Yeah.
That left-hand turning lane is huge-
Yeah.
And it's always backed up, up high-density traffic. I don't think you would see anything different in here, I think you would have backups there too, where the traffic would be so caught in or preventing the other, the through-traffic from going. That would be, again, I'm not a traffic expert, but I don't think that would be too far off.
Thank you. Thank you for both being here. Anyone else here to speak? I'll ask another time if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of land use bylaw amendment I'll ask a third and final time. You just thought you'd wait till I was almost done?
I wanted to go first.
Okay. Welcome, when you get a moment, you know the routine.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Rosler, so I don't usually sit on this portion of the meeting, but today I will. I was asked by Mr. Ham, Henry Ham, who is the original developer of this property, to come and speak on his behalf. He's ill today, so was unable to attend. He's very passionate about this and wanted someone to read some words that he had and so we went through that with him. He also expressed his apologies for not being able to be here, so. And his representatives from potential ends are also out of town, so I get the nod, I guess. He, there's a lot of history here, I think a lot of people have expressed that, the residents have expressed that, there's, I think he has the most history of anyone, which is interesting. I mean, he took his quarter section of land from a farmed field to what it is today, so I think he would be very proud, sitting here, listening to all the residents talk about how encouraged they are by what's there and how proud they are that everything has been built the way that it is. So I think that's a pretty neat thing to have seen and I had the pleasure of also watching it develop literally from the ground up, so. He did want to express his significant opposition to the accesses. I think he supports everything that the residents have opposed to this, have said tonight, primarily through, just in the disturbance of that municipal reserve and the fountain that he installed for decades now. So that's obviously become something that the community has loved and I believe he really truly wants to keep it that way, so. He planned this neighborhood a long time ago, all the way back to, I believe it's Rosalie Bellwood that he had talked to about planning the neighborhood, so he's very passionate about the accesses and the roadways and the overall concept of the design. So the park spaces and pedestrian links and all the things that have made the community great that you heard from tonight are what he put a lot of heart and soul into, so. In his mind, these accesses negatively affect all of those things, so he's very proud of it. He wants to, wanted me to express his support for all the residents that are here. He has long been gone from this community as far as land sales and things like that, but he holds a lot of stock in Pinnacle staying the way that it is, so. He understands and he mentioned today that there was, in his mind, a couple thousand people within there, I think heard someone say tonight, there's significantly more than that. So through multiple years of development, that's been something he's also been proud of, so. The entry feature when this neighborhood was designed was very key to the development, so I think the disturbance to that is primarily what's causing concerns here. It is the first thing you see, Mr. Brown mentioned that, it's a nice feature, he does not want to see it disturbed. It's got a lot of walkable park space around it with amenities and the proposed accesses seriously impact that, so. He feels the accesses are not necessary, there are other alternatives, I believe one of the counselors tonight mentioned that, that the accesses were there and the options for developing this property have been in existence for quite some time. That's still a viable opportunity. We do a lot of work within this world and we do understand that commercial property does require access. It just needs to be amicable to the community, so. So the proposal or the request that he would have is that the access off 108th remain and that the internal accesses off of Pinnacle do not, so. He really urges council to decline this proposal and respect the wishes of the community and the original vision for the community. There's a couple, a couple of things that just came up during the discussions that I thought I would touch on. There's a lot of talk about buffer between residential and industrial lands, but I guess one of the questions that we would likely have is why the remainder of the land isn't being developed. I mean, commercial, I 100% agree that commercial land makes sense on this corner. I don't know about 800 meters off the main roadway, so I think likely that potential buffer remains as industrial. I would say it's unlikely that without the accesses that are required for commercial, that we would see commercial further in on the development. So that would remain as an IB district. I do think that IB is a transitional district, it's very much talked about with the planners, that that's something that we usually use to try and transition between residential and industrial. I don't think there was any major concerns with the traffic model, I think the presentation was good and I don't know, there's a lot of assumptions in traffic, so I think you guys asked all the questions that you need to ask and hopefully that can get clarified for you alternatively. There is clearly some congestion problems and I think adding to these with bringing more traffic onto Pinnacle Boulevard is not going to help that. So the, I don't know if there's anything, the only thing that I thought of that never really got talked about and there was a lot of discussions around pedestrian safety and things like that, and I guess one of the questions I would have for admin was, was there any discussion through the TIA regarding what would have to be there for that pedestrian crossing? Because with the massive increase in traffic, I'm assuming there's, it doesn't take very many pedestrians to trigger traffic signals, things like that, so. So with this, a pretty major crossing there, I don't know, maybe that's, I don't know if I can ask a question, but. Okay, perfect. So that would be a concern, but anyways, that's about all I had. Henry again apologizes that he couldn't be here, but he really wants to support the community and I think in his mind, leaving this reserve the way that it was designed and originally constructed is a primary goal of his, so.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Rosler. I'll just check and see if any of my colleagues have any questions for you. Seeing no one in the queue, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I will ask a third and final time if there's anybody else here to speak in opposition to land use bylaw amendment C-1260-199. I will now offer council an opportunity to ask administration questions before I close this public hearing. I have a couple myself, Council Bressi, you had one?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, a question for administration coming out of this is, there, one of the big potential features of this is adding a left-turning lane on Pinnacle Way onto 108th Street, upgrading that intersection so that current congestion gets alleviated, but I'm curious, does that, does this development have to happen for that intersection upgrade to happen? Is there any plans to upgrade that intersection anyways as an apartment comes in and as we get more traffic? Or would that truly be dependent on this development?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, yes. The plans to upgrade the intersection are based solely on if the development is introduced. Traffic engineering continuously reviews intersection performance throughout the city and at this point, there are no plans to upgrade the intersection if the development does not proceed.
And will that, will that be revisited once the apartment's there and we have more trips being generated, or?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, thank you. The modeling that has been done accounts for the increased population of full buildout and again, traffic engineering will continue to monitor the intersection and if it gets an overall unacceptable level of service, then that would be brought forward for discussion.
But most likely that intersection upgrade doesn't happen without this.
That's correct.
Council O'Connor?
Yes, just to build off Councilor Bressi's points, I think it's important that we hear what the neighborhood has told us. Their safety concerns, accessibility, getting across the intersection, so I'm just wondering, what's the process, I know this is not the place, but what's the process to recommend widening that road so that through-traffic goes straight through in the left-hand lane? Isn't there, and there are a couple other small issues with where cars park? I mean, those are easy solutions and I'm wondering if we shouldn't consider widening and allowing people to park parallel that doesn't block the lane and makes it safe for pedestrians? So I can't do that now, but I just want to make sure that we're considering changes in the future. Is that possible?
Councilor O'Connor, I would say that based on Mr. Johnson's first answer, that it's not in the immediate future. However, any elected official can bring forward a concern to appropriate standing committee to have information built in a report and then send a initiative to fall budget deliberation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, no problem. Council O'Toole?
Thank you very much. I've got a question regarding access and exit. Could we have both exit and access off of Highway 40 and forget about the other road? Pinnacle Drive?
Um, Mr. Johnson?
It's certainly within council's decision authority to deny the accesses onto Pinnacle Drive, which would limit the access opportunities to this parcel. The primary reason why the all-directional is proposed to Pinnacle is with the only access being onto 108th being a right-in, right-out, that limits traffic from, the only people that can access the site are from the north and if you are leaving the site, you are forced to go south. So there's no opportunity for people traveling from the south to access to the site and there's also no opportunity for people leaving the site to travel north.
Just one more point that I would like to see. I like the ability to take the land away from the park and put in a parking lane on the park side. That would be something that we can do to avoid some of the traffic concerns?
I would say again, any conversation is possible, appropriate time to bring it to the appropriate standing committee for consideration. Just echoing Council O'Toole's comments, and then I'll get to the others in the queue, there would also be access off, I don't even, on 79th Avenue, right? Correct? You go 79th into 108A and you would access it from the north side, as shown on the, yeah, on 110th. You would access it on 110th. So you could turn left at that intersection. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. To clarify, I'm understanding you're stating that if someone chose to exit the site, they could travel west over to 110th and travel through the industrial park. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. Council Teason?
Yeah, thank you. So just a question, it's sort of an aside, I think I already know the answer, actually I do already know the answer. Mr. Johnson, if the Pinnacle Neighborhood Association wanted to trigger an improvement to the intersection on 108th Street, they could still do that through a local improvement, right?
Ms. Coulter?
Through the chair, I think theoretically they could. It would be a really challenging local improvement to manage and determine because it is such a busy intersection with so much volume, it would probably be challenging to solely attribute all of the improvements to one neighborhood.
Yeah, so like the mission across the street, they would also be involved in something like that to maybe trigger an improvement to the area?
Yeah, exactly. This wouldn't be the typical type of project that you'd see a local improvement on as it is part of the broader arterial network.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks. You actually more than answered my question and gave me the info, I appreciate it.
Council Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Not sure which one to address this question to, but following up an earlier comment from Highway 40 heading north, to me, there is enough concrete median to put in a left-turning lane. Now, of course, it's right after a set of lights, so you could probably only stack it with three or four cars in there to turn left into that same spot where there's the left-in, right-in, right-out. So basically, it would be on the north part of that property, off of Highway 40 or 108th to turn left in there, but I don't necessarily think that we would have to have a set of lights, it would just be crossing oncoming traffic as a yield or a stop. Had that been explored at all?
Mr. Johnson or Ms. Downing? Ms. Coulter? One of you.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, that wasn't something that has been explored, it would be a challenging movement due to the proximity of the intersection to the south and it would be, it would be a very limited queuing space and you would likely end up with traffic conflicts with vehicles backing up into the main thoroughfare.
Yeah, that's what I see as well, but I just was asking, wondering if it had been explored or just ruled out.
I don't believe it was ever explored. I don't know that it would have been considered a feasible option at the time.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't see anyone else in the queue, so I've got a few and if any of my colleagues jump in, feel free, or want to jump in, feel free. First one, Mr. Rosler asked, and I was curious, has any assessment been done on the crosswalk impact based on the increased traffic and accesses as proposed? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The traffic impact assessment says that rapid flashing beacons would not be triggered by the volumes, but recommends that it is considered at time of detailed design.
Okay. My other questions are in regards to a couple comments that were made by the initial proponents. They mentioned that the site plan wasn't necessarily what they're going to build, but a direct control district states that a development plan must generally follow the slight site plan, is that not correct?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, yes, that's correct. There is a provision in the draft DC district that says that development shall be generally consistent with the intent and layout of the plan shown in Figure 2 site plan. So in crafting that, I believe that we, our intention was to say that this is generally what you get and we didn't want to be bound by something small like a landscape island or something like that. But if the site plan changes significantly, that we were not comfortable with the intent of the district and council's intentions, then we would require that they follow the site plan.
Okay. My next question, who's the development authority, as it was mentioned in the DC and the discretionary uses, et cetera? I don't think it's council, who is the development authority, just to confirm?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, the development officer is the designated development authority for permitted uses in the district and the development officer would be able to grant variances up to 10%. Beyond that, it would be brought to committee.
Okay, thanks. And my last question, the direct control specifies that we can't limit the hours of operation, is that correct? It was mentioned in regards to a 24-hour gas station and there's potentially limits. Is that possible?
Through the mayor, or thank you, Mayor Clayton, the draft district does not contain any provision speaking to hours of operation, so the development authority would not have that ability because these are listed as permitted uses. So if there were some desire to limit hours of operation, that would need to be specified in the direct control district.
Okay, perfect, thank you for that. I see none of my colleagues online or in the queues, so I'm going to close this public hearing and look to business arising. Council Teason? Counselor Thiessen?
I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-199, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you for that, Counsel Thiessen. On first reading, there is no discussion or debate, so I'll call the question.
Counselor Plod opposed?
And first reading is defeated. So now, I'm just looking through my other business. Just give me one second here, I want to get to that. There are other motions as suggested by administration not to do. Okay, so I'm going to look to team over there. The other motions in the staff report are irrelevant based on there not being first reading, is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. The amendments run together, so if the bylaw doesn't pass...
Thanks so much. So I'm going to move on to item number 17, delegation business. We had one delegation here this evening, or rather, my apologies, we had two. I will look to my colleagues to see if there's any questions for administration. If there are questions for administration, great. I don't see anybody moving too quickly or in the queue, so I will look to business arising. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I would receive both delegations' information for information, if that's fine.
Motion to receive both delegations' presentations for information. I'll give Amanda a moment to get in the queue, in the escribe. If it's there, I don't know. Oh, sorry, my apologies. That motion is in order, so I'll call the question.
Counselor Plod in favor?
And that carries unanimously. With that, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your time.